So I call the regular City of Sonora Council Meeting to order at 5:00 PM, June 17. Andy, would you like to lead us in private? Thank you.
Ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Plummer?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sagerstrom?
Here.
Councilmember Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Merrill?
Here.
And then the city clerks report on agenda posting.
At 1:50 PM on the 14th day of June 2024, the agenda for today's City of Sonora Council Meeting was posted in the window of City Hall for public view.
Thank you. Council, the approval of the agenda.
I'll move to approve.
Just a second. Chris, Melissa had some changes that she needed to bring forward. And since she's absent, you're going to have to do it in her stead.
Yeah, she just wanted the public hearing labeled B to be moved up.
Okay, thank you. We will do that under item eight, item B, the first public hearing. So approval of the agenda, we have a motion?
So moved.
Just a second then. Matt?
Oh, I'll second.
So, thank you. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously, five zero. Public comment. The public may address the council on any item of public interest not otherwise on the agenda that is within the jurisdiction of the city. No action may be taken. Matters to be addressed may be referred to city staff or placed on a subsequent meeting agenda. Speakers are limited to a three-minute presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. My name is Mike Glentke. I'm representing Mayor Mount Holmes tonight. It's been 20 years in progress, but I'm very excited to announce new homes, new housing in our Woods Creek bungalow neighborhood. It is a cute, friendly neighborhood. Unfortunately, had a rough journey getting from start to where we are now. The original investors hit a lot of financial turmoil with that project, and it pretty much hit a wall, brick wall. There were seven remaining lots that pretty much turned into abandoned weed lots, and we have stepped in. It's taken several years. We've stepped in and we're looking to finish the neighborhood. Despite such restrictions with our hillside ordinance and some constraints that we have there, we've been able to improve the front entries of the homes. I think we've done a lot to improve land values, appearance, and the investments that our neighbors have put into that neighborhood. So we're excited about the outcome. We plan on taking whatever returns, revenues we might get out of this project and reinvesting it again into City of Sonora Housing and keep that trend moving forward. We're excited to be able to do that. I have seven copies here of a little map to make council aware of if they're interested in that neighborhood, if I may.
Yes, if you could just give it to the clerk, yes. No worries.
And let's build local. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Glentke. We sure appreciate all the new housing.
And thank you for the map.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members and members of the public. My name's Katie Dunn. I am the president of the Sonora Chamber of Commerce, and I just wanted to report on a couple of items this evening. One is the Sonora Chamber submitted a letter of support for Sonora Moves Downtown Paseo and Regional Connectivity Project today. So I just wanted to make you aware that we sent a letter of support. Also, at our last city council meeting, I had mentioned about the sonora opera hall dot com website. It is now live, and we are really, really excited about it. It is going to streamline the process for our renters as well as the chamber staff. So we're really excited about that. We also had our second Christmas parade meeting last week, and we're looking at ways to streamline that event, too. So there's going to be more coming on that. And then lastly, our chamber mixer is tomorrow night. It is hosted by BNI, which is Business International Network. They are a business referral organization. They're hosting it, and it will be at RE/MAX Gold right there next to the old Amcoa Bank Building at 5:30 at search. So that's all I have to report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Dunn.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Jerry Lewis, and I represent the Greenlee Oaks Firewise Community. And through the months that we've been working to clear some of our own properties, we've been out about in the community around Sonora, up and down different major roads in our county, so on and so forth. And the reason I came here today is I feel the need to express not only to you folks, but I did express to the county supervisor meetings last week that we are in a tinderbox here and that we all need to be aware that there's things that really, really need to be done. Probably you drove in tonight, or you've been to Twalomee City, or you've been to some area in the county, and you can't look in either direction without looking this side of the road or that side of the road. The grass is this high, trees are falling down. So the county actually, when you think about it, owns about 25 feet of right away. So the road's normally about 25 feet. So that leaves 12 and a half feet on each side that actually the county is responsible for. What I'm not seeing is the county doing any mitigation. There's no tractors out there cutting the grass. There's no trees being trimmed. And the chance of a fire starting is so much higher in these areas. It comes from exhaust pipes. I've seen people flip their cigarettes out the windows. It's just beyond all comprehension to live in a community like that. Sonora is three square miles. I want you to think about something for just a second, three square miles. The Corral Fire burnt 14,000 acres in 24 hours. We're only 2,100 acres here, the whole city. That's how fast a fire can move through here. This city takes in 50% of the revenue in the county of Twalomee, 50% of the revenue. That's from what I looked up. So I came here tonight to employ all of you with whatever you could do to talk to the city council members that you know, or we need to get these people on board. We need to get monies to public works, or we need to get the citizens out to start clearing these roads because we are living in an area that is the highest fire zone in the nation. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak to you tonight. Any who'd like to talk to me afterwards, I'd be lovely to talk to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Good evening. I would just like to say that tomorrow, June 18th, is the International Day of Countering Hate Speech. And hate speech begins with words, and each one of us. So the spread of hate is used by those who went to sow divisions, to scapegoat some issues like distrust, misinformation from real issues. And governments, local authorities, religious, corporate, and community leaders have a duty to invest in measures to support, protect, and advocate for diversity and inclusivity and challenge hate speech in all forms. And I've been hearing a lot of hate speech in a lot of meetings lately, so I'd like not to hear it here tonight. The library is starting a new program, which I hope will be helpful for our community. And they have an intern who's volunteering to help with technology. So if you need to learn how to use a computer, you need to learn how to use a smartphone. He is prepared to be available every Saturday from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM at the Sonora Main Library. I have a little flyer. I don't know if you want to put it in your packet or something. And the library is also going to be doing an adult summer reading program. So if you're an adult and would like to participate, you can go by the library and sign up and get your free swag. I would like to thank the mayor for coming to the volunteer fair. He was the only elected official that I saw, and there were quite a few people who had come back and some new people on the rescheduled volunteer fair, and most of them, I think, anywhere from six volunteers and up that signed up. And I know one person reported to me from Groveland that they actually had someone come down from Groveland and sign up and is now volunteering up in the Groveland area. And then if you need to clean out your closet and you would like to get rid of shoes, St. Patrick's is going to be collecting shoes through July 28th. And they're doing it as a fundraiser to help pay for some of their families for textbooks and classroom supplies. So they're going to get 40 cents for the bag, and they're trying to collect 90 bags, which is only $360. So that kind of makes me wonder. But anyway, I do have a flyer, and I will leave it here for your employees or whatever.
Thank you very much. Is there any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council for our consent calendar. We are going to separate item E for some clarification. And that was it. So, yes. Okay. Well, Chris will be sitting in her stead and okay, so we can probably manage that. So that was B? Okay, so we'll
So we're pulling B and?
B and E.
E, okay, thank you.
To discuss separately.
Thank you, Mayor.
Is there any public comment on the consent calendar? Stephen, are you getting up to comment or, okay? Okay, just I wanted to give you time if you were coming up. So with that, do I have a motion from the council?
I'll move to approve.
A second?
All in favor? Say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes unanimously except for B and E, so let's bring it to B. Wave the second reading and adopt ordinance number 898, amending chapter 17.64, transient use permit under title 17 zoning of the municipal code. Tyler Somerset, our community development director. And your questions?
Hey, Tyler.
Hello.
I have like a couple of questions, actually five. It's more than a couple, but they're easy. All right, so number one, the revised rules. So you're saying this is revised? Do we have a page that had the strikeouts?
All the strike-throughs.
The strike-throughs?
So we provided that, the strike-through version at the last meeting on June 30.
I thought so. Okay, that was number one. Number two, are we increasing the number of permits?
So we did, we had some discussion about whether or not we wanted to cap the number of permits that were available. I think ultimately the decision was to adopt the ordinance as recommended, and then staff would do a review if for some reason we started getting, you know, a number of requests that seemed to outpace, you know, a healthy situation for the city.
Okay, great. Number three, the current noise ordinance is 10 o'clock. Is that for neighborhoods across the city? Is that standard?
That's a good question. I think we, this one is specific to being able to deal with our transit occupancy permits. I might just defer to the chief here to see if off the top of his head that applies to the rest of the residences.
We do not have a noise.
Oh, okay. All right. And you and I had discussed nine, but I guess we settled on 10?
Yes, well, we were outvoted.
Okay.
Let me rephrase that. We don't have a general noise ordinance. We do have one
Can noise, so specific to that, but not a general noise ordinance.
Thank you. Number four, you're not done yet. Who is or will be the complaint department, counting citations, et cetera?
So that will, there's an email address that's been established. Those will come to staff probably between the administrative services director and myself, and we will work on those likely through code enforcement, since this, once it becomes adopted, will be a city code that then Irma, our code enforcement officer, can implement.
Okay. And the last one, number five. So in this outline, it says no more than two cars in front of the short-term rental. What if somebody has three cars? Is somebody supposed to go out and take a picture of them and then run and show you in the morning? Or if somebody's making noise to 11:00, are they supposed to audiotape that? How does that enforcement arm work?
So as a general rule, I think, you know, two is what we'd like to see provided. We will look at each application. There may be some instances where providing more than two spaces, you know, can be done, and others where providing two won't be able to be done. So we'll look at that in the application process. But like a lot of things within the Sonora Municipal Code, they are complaint-driven, which means, you know, we will respond once we are notified of an issue. And I think the parking would likely work in a similar fashion where we get some type of a complaint from a neighbor or a surrounding property owner, and then we investigate and adjudicate that.
So for clarification for the residents, again, if there was three cars parked out, would the person who had the complaint go out and have to take a picture of it to prove their case?
So, I mean, that couldn't hurt. I think the way the ordinance reads now is there has to be someone who can be at the property within 30 minutes, whether that's the owner themselves or some type of a property management agency. And so I think that would give us the ability to respond in a timely fashion to a complaint of that nature.
Okay, thank you very much. That was it.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Good.
I actually have a question. Tyler, if you could just clarify for me, because I raised some concerns at the last meeting regarding the wisdom of basically going back to the way things were when previous councils identified having problems with housing stock and foreign investors coming in and buying up all of our properties. So am I correct in understanding that we're essentially repealing that decision and going back to the way things were completely with no additional changes or caps on housing stock?
So I think, you know, when staff looked at the strategic plan and we looked at, you know, trying to encourage, you know, this segment of Sonora's economy, we did play with the idea of including some kind of a cap. And I think ultimately through discussion decided not to in the short term. However, you know, these ordinances can be brought back and amended, you know, on an as-needed basis. And so I think there was a little bit of a wait-and-see type of approach to this ordinance. And, you know, if we start to see an issue, you know, with a situation that like you've raised, I think we can bring that back to the council and ask for some
My question was, is this essentially going back to the way things were exactly before this moratorium went in place?
Excuse me. No, this is not a one-for-one, just repeal and have gone right back to what we had before.
So and just another kind of follow-up question, because it's related to future items. Am I correct in assuming that Sonora currently does not have an issue with housing stock?
So I think, you know, there's probably a lot of ways to answer that question. I think one of the things that we looked at was our housing element. And in the housing element is a regional housing needs assessment. And our target number for 2024 to 2029 went from 115, providing 115 units to providing two units. And so we felt like we were significantly, you know, addressing or starting to move the needle on, at least from the state's perspective, you know, our allocation of low and very low housing, you know, opportunities within the city. You know, I think in general, I think we know housing is an issue in California at large. And depending on who you ask, I think, you know, the market, you know, you could hear different stories about what it looks like here in Sonora specifically.
And I just have concerns because, you know, from my perspective, I've been getting kind of contradictory or maybe, you know, information that doesn't quite add up because, again, on future items, the argument is we do need housing. But then when we're sitting here not even capping how many Airbnbs we can have, and we're saying, oh, we're okay with housing, those two things are kind of contradictory to me. And I think especially when we were originally going to have a special meeting regarding one of these future items, and I'm just finding out today that we're not having that anymore, I have concerns when it comes to the people of Sonora voicing their opinions on future developments and things. And I just, it makes me a little uncomfortable when, again, from my perspective, I think we're getting contradictory information. And I just want to get everyone on the same page because I don't see that happening currently. Again, I don't, I don't want to give an opinion one way or the other on future developments, but I think we owe it to the people to be very, very clear and specific on whether we have a housing problem or not, and how we're going to mitigate that. Because on the one hand, we're saying we're fine, but then on other projects, we're saying, oh, we want to develop and things like that. So just in the wake of a lot of public comment that I've been made aware of, I think we owe it to the people to be a little more clear on where we stand as a city on this issue and how we're going to address some of those public concerns going forward.
Okay, Councilman Merrill, if I could address some of those as well. I brought back the repeal of the general TOT or short-term rentals issue, and that largely because it was not having the desired effect, but was making us attractive or placing more homeless in the city. When you have properties that would have been great Airbnbs now turning into transitional housing, it's not really functioning the way we had hoped. And so that's, that's one of the reasons.
Could you elaborate on what Airbnb properties are being converted into
Well
transitional housing? Because I haven't heard of that at all.
Yes, you have, and you fought it. Yes, 720 Snell Street would have been ideal for
I didn't, I didn't fight that project. I just thought there was better opportunities.
I did, and I thought it was a poor idea to put more homeless in the city.
But it wasn't an Airbnb, though, was it?
No, it was not, but it could have been
But you just said that we were turning Airbnb's into transitional housing, and I don't think that's accurate or correct.
Sitting a long time on the market. It was very attractive to the county, and they snapped it up instead of somebody turning it into a tourist destination or sleeping.
But I mean, that's all speculation at this point.
It is.
So we're basing that repeal on speculation as opposed to actual fact?
No, it just, it was not helping our supply.
But we don't have a housing problem. So that's all I'm saying is how are we going to figure this out? Because I'm getting contradictory information from yourself, from county staff. So I'd just like to get a little more clarification on what the hell it is we're doing here. Because, again, I question the wisdom of going back to essentially a system that previous councils decided. And I believe you and other council members were on those councils that didn't work. So to me, you know, if you're going to make a mistake and we repeat the same mistake, that doesn't seem very wise to me.
No, we are correcting the mistake.
By doing the same thing that we previously decided didn't work? Am I, I'm just asking, like, am I understanding this correctly? Because I'm genuinely confused on what our stance is on this or what the facts actually are.
Going back to a liberal market approach for owners of their properties. And before we had limited it to only any new Airbnb's, as a generalized term, would only be allowed if it were rooms inside the house, inside the home with the owners there. So we are taking it back to the way it was before, but with a higher level of inspections and requirements, the efforts to make the neighborhoods more appealing in that they have to have somebody there with or available within half an hour, and some of those other mitigation efforts that weren't in place before. So it's not So it's not 100% like before. We're just saying this was not doing what we had hoped, which is provide more long-term rentals. And as a future councilman in the next session, if that's not working, you will then address it again.
Thank you for the clarification.
So. And with that, is there any public comment? Unless further counsel, I mean, were there any further questions from the council? No. Public comment then?
Well, I appreciate your discussion. I would just like to clarify that item B is to waive the second reading and adopt ordinance number 898, amending chapter 17. The agenda item is not to discuss the availability of housing. And I would point out that Tamara Blankenship with the county did several town forums on short-term rentals. There were, there was at least one, if not two, and I think two in the city of Sonora, one of which was for owners. And a lot I hear is misinformation claiming that using short-term rentals takes out of the housing market and deprives us of housing. That is not what she found. So I would suggest, if you have any questions about that, that you actually talk to her and see what her data set. Thank you.
Thank you. And I was able to attend one of those open houses. So. And thank you also for the clarification on the discussion. With that, bring it back to the council. Do I have a motion to approve? Item B.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Did you?
I voted.
Okay, I didn't hear you. Okay, thank you. That's four, one. And then item E. Consider approval of task order number four in the amount of $50,000 for Duberry Engineers, Inc., Phase One Transition of the city's engineering files from paper, from paper hard copy stored at an off-site location to the digital file stored at City Hall. Mike Pugh, city engineer, Melissa Ead, city administrator, being filled in by Director Gorski. And would you, that was, to be pulled for some clarification, would you clarify that, please? And that's where you had to go as well.
Was there a specific question?
There are some specific questions, but Melissa had asked me to pull this.
Okay.
So that she could address it as well.
I'll raise the question if you like.
Sure, yeah.
The memo says spending $50,000 on phase one digitizing, but then the letter from Duberry says phase one is $75,000. So which is it?
Yeah, phase one is 75. The entire project's about $125,000. We eventually will go to phase two and ask for additional money, but at this time, we're asking for the $50,000.
Thank you.
So just to initiate the project?
Yes. And begin digitizing those files.
Yeah, which should be considerable.
I was just going to say for the public's information that our, the city engineer Jerry Ficillo kept very detailed records going back to the late 70s. So there is a lot of paper and a lot of historic records. So this is, I mean, he did a great job, but this is just a job now.
Yeah, it's a literal houseful.
But the only way to quickly access it is through Mr. Ficillo. And people not acquainted with his filing standard or system apparently find it difficult to access given documents. So this has been a long time coming, and we will start with it. Is there any public comment? No. Bring it back to the council. Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Unfinished business. Counselor White. I may need some assistance on this. Item seven is to consider approval of resolution establishing number 06-17-2024-E, establishing a workplace violence prevention plan in accordance with the California Senate Bill 553, SB 553. And because I am the one who brought this back, I was told, you're on your own, mister. So. My understanding was that after the last meeting, that we were going to have some clarifying language that would be somewhat more explicit. And it was only in the last couple of days that I realized that the budget had overtaken everything else. So I put this on the agenda to either reiterate to staff that we would like to deal with this before the end of this session and/or solicit further comment from the council.
So if I could, Mayor, just to kind of pick off the discussion. Yeah. So as it currently stands, the resolution is passed, it takes immediate effect. Kind of consistent with what you said previously, Mayor, it's effectively a don't ask, don't tell policy. And which means that there has not been any changes. It's not explicitly allowed or, and it's not prohibited either for concealed carry, which is really the topic that we're talking about here, as opposed to the greater workplace violence. It's just that we had to bring everything back in the interest of time, because it was the only way to do it. And I, and I think that the discussion that you, or at least that I understand that you wanted to have is really about whether or not to make it more explicit. I will say, and this is kind of consistent with what Councilmember Hawkins had said at the last time, at last meeting. It is my recommendation that we don't make it explicit, because I think that that will, has the potential of creating additional liability. And that we're better, we're better situated to just leave the policy kind of as it is. Where, where people, where there's no change, and if you have a concealed weapons permit, you're allowed to do it. I do think at some point that we're going to have to bring it back to address questions that came up that are more risk management-related, which is that, you know, what we have heard is that risk management is looking at basically denying any kind of insurance coverage in the future for all of its members, unless they prohibit concealed weapons on their, on their
Policies.
In the workforce, you know? So if you want to be insured, then that's the direction that they're heading, but we're not there today. And that's, that's not really a government decision. That's more of an insurance decision. And if that happens, then we'll have to come back and revisit it. But right now, if somebody had a concealed weapon, the policy would be that they would, if they're doing it lawfully and handling it lawfully and consistent with all the rules that go into place, then there'd be no prohibition.
Thank you very much. So just being in the public record makes it official enough?
I think that, you know, council has spoken that this is an area that, you know, of concern to them. Again, I don't want to mislead. We will need to bring this back, but it has more to do with the other components of it. And I don't, and given what we're waiting for from risk management, I don't know that that's going to happen with this council, and it's not because we're trying to be turkey or anything else like that. But we're relying on people outside of our own government entity to be able to give us feedback and information. And it also sounds like it's something that they're, it's currently actively being discussed in a, in a decision would be made by the insurers to, like a more global, you know, more global policy. So that might affect us. So, so we'll have to come back. It's not because, again, we don't want this, this council to decide. It has more to do with external factors.
Okay, thank you very much. And incidentally, Administrator Eads had mentioned to me, I mean, this for the council's benefit and the public, that at, at current don't ask, don't tell, we have, it has no effect on our insurance.
Correct. Yeah. But, but to be really clear, what we heard from our insurers is to have, to be covered through the insurance policy, at least if there was ever to be an instance. And they are currently actively, or even before this topic came up, actively looking at requiring folks to prohibit concealed weapons permits in the workplace if people are being insured.
Oh, thank you. That's obviously business for a different council.
Yes.
Any questions or comments for staff or the public or anything else?
Mr. Mayor, thank you for bringing this back before us. I had some concerns myself. I guess my, because I made a lot of comments last time, I guess my only real comment right now is that many of the concealed carry holders that I talked to get tired of having to prove themselves over and over and over again. As our chief even stated before, you know, we're kind of considered the better of the better people when it comes to background checks and that sort of thing. And it just, it seems like I talk to more and more people every day that may carry concealed and they're like, hey, I can't do this now, and I can't do this, you know, and they get tired of it. And one of the things I will say is that when people move in from out of town and they move up here and they go to apply, they comment about how they don't get hassled up here and how they're, many times have been thanked. Hey, thank you for caring enough to go through the process and, you know, do all the things the right way. So.
Good. Thank you. Nope. Nope.
I'm satisfied with the council's explanation.
Thank you very much. With that, is there any public comment?
I just would like some clarification. So I was here at the last meeting for at least the first part of this discussion. And so this is the copy that I have. So I asked if anything had been changed in here, and one person told me no, and another person told me yes. So then you're saying now, Doug is saying, that it was essentially adopted as it was. So does that mean that the document I have is actually the current and accurate document?
What a great question. Thank you for bringing that to our attention. And so that, my understanding was that we had excised that entire paragraph. Is that not correct? Yes, and I don't.
Yeah, we adopted it with the omission of the concealed weapons.
So that's the paragraph starting with in addition.
Correct.
There's nothing in this paragraph about concealed weapons. So that's what I asked for. So Melissa said it was removed. Somebody else said, no, it wasn't. So that's what I, and then he said it was adopted as it was. So that's what I'm confused about.
Well, it was, it was adopted pursuant to the council's motion. These documents are the same as what was presented to council last time because of the time it was just putting on the agenda. But, but it was, it was adopted pursuant to the council motion, which excluded the, I'm trying to remember what section is off the top of my head. But the, the one that we just had much discussion about, that, that council members were concerned about concealed weapons. So just that one provision was taken out of the formerly adopted one.
And that is, I'm sorry, Counselor White, that is the paragraph that starts in addition to which she is referring.
Okay, yeah.
But it's, it's in this document.
This, because this document, I was concerned that we hadn't adequately dealt with this. I thought we'd bring back something a little more formalized. And so it was sort of at the last minute that I asked that this be put on the agenda, because I will have no further opportunities with which to deal with it.
So then I would request that you delay this then and allow the new incoming council to discuss this and adopt it, because I don't think that's fair for everybody to get their last dig in just before they leave office. When we're going to have a whole new council, I do actually have to live with this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple of questions to ask. Is this generally for the employees or is this for the public?
Employees only.
Employees only. So the public are exempt for any of those concealed carry? Thank you for the clarification.
So with that being a discussion item, I don't see any more public comment. I'm going to close it. And then there is, we already approved it formally. So we will move on to our public hearings. We're going to switch to item B first. And I think that's in the interest of our public. Our budget discussion may go on a long time and be generally disinterested to most people. Reading item B. Consider adoption of resolution, excuse me while I put glasses on, number 06-17-24, to uphold the May 13, 2024 decision of the Sonora Planning Commission, approving, based on the identified findings and conditions, the designer review, site plan, and use permit to allow a 40-foot residential and commercial mixed-use building at 956 Oregon Street. APNs 056-106-004 and 056-108-015. Tyler Somerset, community director, development director.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As noted, this item is coming back on appeal from the planning commission at your June 3 meeting. We set this date as the date for the hearing of the project. So what we'd like to do, I've actually got Emma Goldsmith with me here today, is just to give a summary of the project.
Just one second. We'd better explain the difficulty we're in as well first, or are you doing that afterwards?
I will actually just have Emma do a mic check and make sure that we can hear her seamlessly. We had a little bit of interrupted audio for Mr. White. So Emma, if you don't mind, just doing a mic check for us real quick.
Hello, hello.
Sounds perfect.
Well, that seemed pretty good. Hopefully we'll hold up here, and if not, I'll interrupt you and let you know that we can't quite hear you. So what we'd like to do is introduce the project to you, give you a summary of it. And then we can hear from the applicant and the appellant. And then we can answer questions and work our way through anything that, you know, we need to share publicly here. So with that, Emma will do the first half of this presentation, and then I'll join her in the middle there. Go ahead, Emma.
Thank you, and good evening, members of the public and city council. I am a contract planner with the city of Sonora, and I'm going to provide a brief overview. And then, as Tyler said, I'll hand it back over to him for a discussion of the appeals. Next slide, please.
One moment, Emma. I thought it was going to be as easy as pushing the button here. All right, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. So on the slide before you is a bird's eye view of the parcels to, that you will be taking action on. And this is just to give you some context of the site and the location before I jump into the project details. So on the map, there are two sites identified, the project site, which is the Canning Project area, and then the adjoining parcel, which is the city-initiated rezone at 11 Twalome Street. So the project site itself is located off of Washington. It's vacant. And in terms of nearby usage, uses, it's north of Highway 108 and south of the rail line. Northwest of the project, there are more industrial uses, like county fleet facilities and the Brack House. And then behind the project site to the south and east is residential development. Something to note is that the western part of the project site, which is about 4,000 square feet of the total 31,000. Something to note is that the western part of the project site, which is about four thousand square feet of the total thirty one thousand square feet. Is owned by the city and the applicant is working towards acquiring that parcel from the city. Next slide, please. So in terms of allowed uses for that specific parcel, it is zoned as general commercial, which allows for more. Um, industrial and heavy commercial uses like wholesale storage, processing and gas stations. But the general plan designation is a lower intensity commercial use, like what you would see along Washington. So part of this proposed project is to rezone the parcel. Next slide, please. So the proposed project is a three story forty foot high mixed use building. Six units of the ground floor would be commercial. And then on the second and third floors would be six units of residential for a total of twelve units. There would be a required forty nine parking spaces per the Sonora Municipal Code. The residential parking would be accessed off of Oregon and the commercial parking would be accessed off of Washington. On the next few slides, I have some renderings and elevations to give you a sense of the look and feel. So on this slide is the elevation and design of the project. So the exterior of the commercial, which is the first floor, would be a smooth concrete masonry. The exterior of the residential, which is the next two stories, would be cement lap siding. And then the colors are as shown. So it'd be the scheme of brown and whites, oak wood for the siding, whitest white for the trim, and then Toscana for the shutters. Uh, next slide, please. So this is the floor plan of the proposed project. As I mentioned, six units of commercial on the first floor. And then the residential units would be two bedroom units. Um, and this is, uh, you know, mixed use, so it is similar to some of the development that you'd see in the downtown area. Next slide, please. This is the layout of the project. It shows traffic flow and locations of the buildings on site. So the main entrance for the development would be right off of Washington, but the residents would access off of Oregon. There are some site improvements proposed, so Oregon would be widened. And then Mariposa Street would provide fire access. Landscaping would also be submitted as a part of this project and reviewed by the Parks and Beautification Committee. Next slide, please. So in order to move forward with the project, it needs approvals, which are known as entitlements. There is a set of criteria in the code. It is a, that project is evaluated against that criteria to determine if findings can be made for approval. Some of the entitlements are just triggered by this type of development, like a design review is triggered because it's a commercial building that's being constructed. And it's really evaluating the look and the feel and the compatibility of the building to the area. And then the site plan review determines if really this land can accommodate that type of development. But the applicant is also seeking a use permit to increase the height from thirty five feet to forty feet, so a five foot increase. And then the rezone of the property because this mixed use development is not compatible with the general commercial zoning. It allows, general commercial zoning is a much heavier, more industrial use. Um, and then on the next few slides, I'll talk about the timeline for the project. So on November thirteenth, there was a public hearing scheduled for the planning commission for a review and a decision on the entitlements. But we continued that due to the number of comment letters we received, received about thirteen comment letters. So between November thirteenth and May thirteenth, the applicant and staff worked to address those comments from the November meeting. And then on May thirteenth, there was another public hearing scheduled for the design review, site plan review and use permit. It was approved. Upon the approval, that triggered a ten day appeal period where the project could be. Uh, the decision by the planning commission could be appealed. So on May twenty first, staff received two appeals and then a third appeal was received on the twenty third. Um, on June third, uh, the appeals were brought before the council in which this um current appeal um hearing was scheduled. And with that, I will turn it over to Tyler.
All right. Thank you, Emma. To summarize some of the concerns that we had from the appellants. We had, we had a feeling that there was inadequate notice provided for the project and and we'll address each of these in more detail, but. Just to give you an overview, there were concerns that maybe the project was not in compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. Concerns that the project wasn't consistent with Sonora's historic character, the look and feel in that area. That the project was, there are concerns that project was approved despite a comment letter that. That the project had received from the city engineer at the time. The project, concerns that the project was approved despite concerns from the neighborhood. Advocating that, you know, the project was not a good fit. Uh, and concerns um that there was heavy kind of tree removal without appropriate mitigation. And that's kind of a summary. We got, you know, lots of comments as as you're aware, we shared a lot of those comments with you and and we will do our best to. Work through not only these ones, but others as they come up here this evening. Um, so. You know, as staff looked at some of these uh concerns, we'll just go through, you know, some of our thoughts on, you know. Responses to those. So the city, whenever we get a project of this nature, we do a three hundred foot noticing of the project. We have a program that helps us to do that where we can drop a pin on the project and then it. You know, using geographic information systems, you know, draws a three hundred foot circle and captures all the addresses. That fall within that three hundred foot requirement. Uh, and so we did that for each of the um times that the project came either to the planning commission, both times it went to the planning commission. And then for this meeting as well. Um, in addition to that, uh, there are requirements that um that the city notice, have a public notice that goes into the paper. And we did that for each of those meetings. The California Environmental Quality Act is is a um, and a huge and extensive. You know, state and federal law, I mean, state is SEQA and uh, but there's a federal equivalent of that. This one only has to comply with SEQA, but it's dense and it's really um. You know, it applies to all sorts of projects and there are lots of of considerations. When staff looked at this project where it sat. We felt like that qualified for uh an exemption under California Environmental Quality Act. The exemption that um we selected had five criteria that have to be met in order to be able to use that one. The first one is that the project is consistent with the applicable general plan designation. And the zoning for that parcel. In this case, um, the the city uh recognizes that the general plan designation. Uh, for this property is commercial. Uh, the zoning, which often is a secondary step to the update of the general plan. Uh, had not been updated yet, but by law, the city was required to make. The general plan and the zoning for each of the parcels in the city consistent. So. That's why we are recommending that, you know, as part of this effort, that required action take place, which makes it fully consistent. With this criteria. Uh, second, the proposed development occurs within city limits on a project site of no more than five acres. Uh, the project is within city limits and it is less than one acre. Uh, third, the project has no value as habitat for endangered, rare or threatened species. This parcel is had been previously developed. It had a single family home on it. It's in a part of town that has been heavily developed historically. Roadways going through drainage ditches on the property. And so rare and threatened or endangered species um do not show up on that parcel. Fourth, approval of the project would not result in any significant effects related to traffic noise. Air quality or water quality. Uh, and I would just qualify this one with significant is a loaded term. It is one that carries with it. The a measurement and a threshold. And so when we say significant, it is not as if there will be no. You know, change at all. It just means that there are thresholds that get established for a traffic impact. Noise impacts, air quality impacts in this project, according to staff's review, uh, did not meet those thresholds. And then finally, that the site can adequately be served by all required utilities and public services. Because it's in a developed part of town, it has water, it has power, it's got, um, you know, TED services. So um, we felt like it was a good fit for the exemption that we designated. So this is is one of the tools that staff has available. This is uh, and it's, you know, not a very good example, but this map shows that. Essentially, the project is located in a low, um, you know, uh, traffic area of the city, uh, being on the south side. But this tool takes into account all sorts of development and it's, you know, it's used by the Twomey County Transportation Council. Uh, in conjunction with inputs from the city and the county and it, uh, you know, it helps us designate uh what those traffic volumes look like. Uh, another concern that we heard was that the project is not consistent with the historic character of Sonora. I guess, you know, staff feel like the the development pattern along Washington Street in particular is a fairly dense use. It's one that has been kind of the heart of Washington Street of Sonora. It's considered our downtown area, even though this is south of the most intense development within Sonora currently. It is part of that main strip. And so we felt like it is, uh, it does reflect what we see in the downtown, which is. You know, multi-story and a mix of of uses, uh, whether that be commercial, residential, uh, or or other, um, even multifamily. And and then finally, you know, we want our downtown to be walkable. We want it to be a place where people can live and work. And uh, you know, adding commercial to an area that doesn't currently um have much. Seem consistent with the development pattern for Sonora and what had happened here historically. This is just a, um, you know, uh. Kind of a conglomeration of different multifamily units uh in Sonora. Some are multiple stories, some are single story. And they are um throughout the greater kind of downtown area. A concern about uh the project being approved despite comments from the city engineer. One of the the ways that these projects get reviewed is we have um responsible agencies that we send these projects out to and they say. You know, give us comments on um, you know, concerns and um. And and their ability to serve the project in in TUD's case or upgrades that would have to be made for the project to to be viable. And so the city engineers' comments were, you know, just one set of comments that we received. And staff takes those comments, takes those concerns. And they address them through what's called a conditions of approval for a project. Those are requirements that the project must meet to basically uh address whatever the concern that was stated. So um, we will review some of these conditions of approval for the project. But you will see responses to the city engineers' comments um throughout the conditions of approval. So it was not that those um comments were ignored or brushed under the carpet in any way, but rather that. A condition was set to make sure that that concern uh was addressed as part of the development of the project. So just a few examples um of from the uh conditions of approval that. The applicant, if the project was approved, is approved, would have to prepare and submit a drainage plan. And that's a standalone um deliverable that then city staff would review and and that. Drainage plan would be put together by, you know, a credentialed individual who would look at, you know, what are the. You know, five and ten and twenty and hundred year flood plains look like in that area and sizing of of um. Infrastructure for that. Uh, the project shall submit an erosion control plan. So we know that dirt would have to be moved for that project. So an erosion control plan would would implement best practices for doing that. An engineered grading plan. Similarly, you know, the project is on a slope and so we'd want to know that those slopes are being protected. Uh, and an engineered site plan as well uh would be required. And that would show, you know, the parking lot, the ingress and the egress from the lot itself, cuts and fills retaining walls. And these would all be prepared by a licensed engineer or architect, you know, as appropriate for the requirement. Uh, again, I won't go through all of these, but you can see here, you know, we've got to have fire access to the project. You have to protect future access to adjacent parcels and particularly those in the south. You know, we need a parking and a circulation plan. So all of these are designed to make sure that the city gets, you know, a really good, well planned project. And the, and the reality is the project could fail and any number of these requirements or. You know, as these plans get prepared. And so it's not as if, you know, just anything gets submitted and staff approves it. It's it's the city's opportunity to really protect itself and make sure it's getting a a quality project. And so, and finally, a landscape plan, you know, is also part of these projects. So how does it look from the road? You know, as if you're a resident, if you're, you know, a commercial uh customer within the facility. Uh, and the the. Final comments here, project was approved despite comments from nearby property owners. And, you know, I think this is can be tricky. You know, the planning commission's role uh is not to like or dislike projects. It's to look at, you know, the general plan and the zoning for the city. It's to look at the future growth of the city and to try and establish. You know, does this project meet the stated criteria in the Sonora Municipal Code? If the project meets those criteria, it's their responsibility to to, you know, support the project. You know, if it comes up short in some way, they can add conditions of approval or otherwise. You know, ask the project to to come into compliance, but uh it's not as if property owner comments were ignored. It's just that the planning commission is looking at, you know, those specific requirements that um are required of them. And finally, that the concern that the project removed trees without mitigation. But we um did cover that it would have a landscape uh mitigation plan and that outlines that, you know, there would be trees along. The frontage of the road, there would be landscaping in front of the building, there would be trees in the parking lot. Again, the exact layout of that would be forthcoming, you know, if the project was approved as a deliverable to the city, that then that gets reviewed by. The appropriate commission. So with that said, I think, you know, today's discussion gives you various options on ways you could go. You know, one would be to uphold the planning commission's approval of the project as is with the existing conditions of approval. Uh, another option would be to to overturn the planning commission's uh approval and say that we can't make some of those findings that. Um, are outlined in your um staff report there. You could uphold the planning commission's approval of the project, but add some additional conditions. Or you could continue the item to kind of a future um date. But I think uh there's two items for your consideration tonight. One is um the appeal and the sep- and then separately is the rezone, but we'll take those um kind of one at a time. So with that said, that concludes um staff's comments. At this time, I would just add one thing, which is that. We did get today, kind of late in the day, um, we got a um report that was sent to us by one of the neighbors. And it outlined, uh, it was the uh regional water quality report and it kind of detailed some of the historic. Uses that were in that area of which there were some underground tanks that had been buried. So there was a concern that um, you know, this old Chevron bulk terminal site where they had both underground storage of petroleum and above ground storage. Was listed as, you know, a site that had environmental concerns. know, a site that had environmental concerns. So we would add, you know, one additional condition, we believe, staff believed after reviewing that report and looking, you know, at the state's website, that that project has been closed, was closed in two, in 2021. But just out as an abundance of caution, the, the council could add the, you know, a new condition saying that the development of the project site would be subject to all environmental applicable regulations and authorizations from, you know, approving agencies and bodies. But I just wanted to note that that was, you know, an item that the staff looked at late today and, and wanted to just bring your attention to. So with that said, I will conclude staff presentation and turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
So, questions for staff?
What do you mean on this Tuesday?
Pardon me? No, this is it. This is it.
I have a question. I, I'm just, how, how extensive is that environmental impact study that you would have to go through about the Chevron, the bearing of the tanks and all that kind of stuff? Is that a lengthy, expensive kind of thing or how, or how complex does it add to the project?
So it looks like from, from staff's review that, that the, that the mitigation has already been done, that the, you know, contaminated soil has been removed. They have a number of observation wells in the area where they then, you know, kind of over time, this started in the early 2000s, you know, monitor for, you know, continuing contamination. It looks as if that has been closed, but I, so I think at this point, it would be, you know, it appears that it would not be significant and it would just be checking in with the Regional Water Quality Control Board just to confirm that.
Thanks.
Mayor Protam, I believe that's one of the things that we dealt with because that end of Washington Street had been widened at one point and we were part of that process of closing that out.
That was about three years ago?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I did have a question. How many apartments is this?
It's 12 apartments overall. There would be six on one level and then six on the second story, third story as well.
And then the, the, the presentation, because it, for the public's knowledge, we're looking at a three-story building if you're looking at it from Washington Street, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And then looking from the neighborhood, you're essentially looking at a two-story building with a basement, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So we're, we're basically, this is brought before us for 12 apartments and for small commercial develop- I mean, you could have like a hair salon in there type of thing or nail salon or something like that, not like a fast food or a gas station, what could be there?
That's correct. I would just say there are six 1,000-square-foot units. So these are not anticipated to be kind of a high-volume use like a fast food restaurant or anything of that nature.
Okay. So yeah, no fast food, you're not going to have a, obviously not have a ton of noise or pollution coming in from a fast food restaurant or a gas station.
Correct.
Okay.
Councilman Merrill?
I just had a question regarding the history of this property. So am I to understa- a- again, y'all have to forgive me, I'm only 35 years old. There used to be a gas station there? If there's tanks or something like a Chevron station, I'm assuming, yeah.
So on this site in particular, there, my understanding as far as the history goes back for me, that there was a single-family residence here, but in that project area, just north of the project site, there was a, kind of a bulk fuel storage, probably not unlike what you have see there today with JS West that, you know, but there were some underground tanks as well. So it, the environmental report just catches the tiny, you know, appears to just catch a tiny sliver of city-owned property that's at the very frontage of the parcel where it meets South Washington Street.
So essentially, imagine the existing propane tanks, you mentioned JS West, that's kind of like what used to be right next to this historic neighborhood?
Yeah, just, just, just north of the project site and, yes, and on both sides of that track there.
So just taking that information, and again, you know, not saying an opinion one way or the other, I would much prefer to be living next to the, the proposed housing project than huge petr- you know, petroleum tanks. That's just my personal preference. So I think that's an improvement and if we're talking about historical precedent, I think that's a step in the right direction personally for that specific location. However, I, I, I have some questions regarding the inconsistency of city engineering and how sometimes we go with, you know, and we have representatives from Dewberry Engineering here tonight. And when I first came onto council, I was under the impression that Jerry Ficchio, and I, I, I respect the work that he's done, but I thought he was retired. So it, could you explain why we're kind of cherry-picking different opinions, so to speak, because we're all human at the end of the day? Could you explain the, the reasoning or the logic behind the inconsistencies when it comes to major city engineering projects and why we can't just choose one or the other?
Sure. So my understanding is that this project first came to the city back in 2023. At that time, the city knew that it was gonna hire a new engineering firm, had not done that yet. So Dewberry did not come on until 2024, maybe at the beginning of the year. I'd have to have Chris check me on exactly when that contract was executed, but essentially the, Jerry's comment, or the city engineers, the previous city engineers' comments predated Dewberry coming on board, which is why, you know, essentially we kind of ended up with two sets of comments.
So my concern is, and again, you know, I, I have the most utmost respect for Mr. Ficchio, but I, I often have to wonder because I've, I've heard even before I decided to run for city council that there could be some pre-existing biases or, you know, general trends that were observed among the public. And I'd be very curious to see what Dewberry's opinion on this project would be and if those concerns are echoed by a more modern engineering firm. I, I just, you know, just to put my peace of mind, you know, at, at ease, I think just the, the, given the inconsistency of who's calling the shots here is really concerning to me. And I, I just see that as being a, I, I think a sign of good faith to the people that would be affected by this project, just to say, hey, look, you know, maybe, maybe we do need a, a different little less potentially biased third-party set of eyes that could be a more neutral third party. Because a- again, you know, I've, I've been involved in some of the decisions in engineering projects that previous engineers have made. And again, I'm, I'm not trying to make assumptions one way or the other, but I, I know that there is a large segment of the public that might have bias issues with this.
That's a very good point, Councilman Merrill. And since we have those engineers here, it would be a good time to call on them as staff.
You read my mind.
So if we could get one or the other or both of our engineers here?
As, as Carly approaches, I'll just share that, you know, I think the city staff have, you know, the utmost respect for the previous city engineer. And sometimes I think it's just a matter of, you know, when is exactly the right time to ask for what? And so I think, you know, in light of, you know, the, the size of this project and the scope of it, we, we did ask for our new city engineer, Carly Bootholes, to take a look at the project and to just let us know if there were, you know, anything that's, you know, that we should address differently. And I'll let her, you know, kind of speak for herself, but ultimately, you know, staff was, was in line with you and, and we did ask for their review of the project as well.
Carly, ma'am.
Hello. So, yeah. Hi, yeah. So Tyler did reach out to me earlier this year to take a look at the project. I reviewed the project and so did a couple of the, some of my colleagues reviewed the project as well. And much like what Tyler had said earlier, I, the mass majority, if not all, of the concerns that were brought forward in the previous letter have been addressed in the conditions of approval.
Thank you very much. Questions for Carly?
Thank you very much, but please don't disappear. We will probably have further questions. Nope. Okay.
I just had one question. Now Mariposa Street is this parallel street to, is this Toolume over here? And that is going to be continued at the, at the bottom of the project?
Correct. So Mariposa Street, which currently is, is really only a line on the map, it doesn't really exist, but would be constructed in part to allow for fire access to the project. And that would also kind of provide some pedestrian access as well from Oregon Street to the project would also take place likely in that same area.
And who is paying for that?
So the, the project applicant bears, bears the burden of, of that.
The project applicant is going to be paying for the fire access, not only to the proposed apartments, but to the neighborhood also?
Well, the, the applicant is responsible for, you know, meeting the fire access needs. So they will have to build that road to the satisfaction of our city fire chief and, and, you know, the engines that we've got.
I'm trying to get to something here. The satisfaction of the fire chief is going to go all the way up to the Mariposa Road. It's not just going to stop the apartments, but it's going to go all the way through as a fire access road, correct?
No, my understanding is it is limited to kind of creating access to the project itself. And it may go just beyond those project limits slightly, but state law kind of, you know, limits how far you can ask for the extension of improvements off-site.
One last item. This is currently commercial. What type of commercial would be appropriate to put in there if in fact we turned it down and said, let's just put up some commercial buildings or I'm in a blacksmith shop or something? What could go in there otherwise?
Are you asking with, because it's, the general plan designation is commercial, but the zoning for it is currently general commercial. So that's, those are heavier uses. It could be, as Emma shared earlier, you know, kind of bulk storage, could be a gas station, could be a senior living facility, could be, you know, any number of, yeah, uses like that.
I'm just trying to see what we're balancing here and weighing because we want the community not to be unhappy, of course, but we also desperately want more housing and commercial space or retail space seems pretty useful lately. And the projected revenue for the city also seems attractive. So I'm just trying to see what other uses it currently would be. I mean, I would also understand if I lived there not wanting, like I say, a blacksmith shop to go in, but, okay, thank you very much. With that, let's ask for public comment.
Mr. Mayor, did you want to?
Well, okay.
Go to the applicant first, maybe?
Just one second. Let, if I could take a five-minute break here, I need to confer with Tyler for a second, perhaps. So, so thank you. The recess is over and I apologize for it. We have a few moving targets and these have been changing as we go. I want to make sure we do everything right. So with that, we are ready for public comment. And it is going to follow this order. We have comments from the applicant for five minutes, then comments from the appellant's, represented by Lee Pagni, Lee Brooks, and Fred and Rhonda Booth. And so they will have five minutes each. And then the applicant has a response time of three minutes. After that, we will have questions from the council and followed by public comment, general public comment. So applicant, Mr. Canning, the floor is yours. Thank you for coming this evening, sir.
How are you? First, I'd like to say this project actually started in April of 22. It has been through the gauntlets with the city and planning and staff. We have covered everything that could ever come up and mitigated everything that had to be mitigated. It's in compliance with your, with all the codes. It's in compliance with all the ordinances. So, it's hard, I don't know what else we can do, but do exactly what you ask us to do by law. That being said, you know, there's quite a few things. To be exempt from CEQA, you have to meet, out of seven items, you have to meet one criteria, only one, this out of seven. This project meets four by your staff, four out of the seven. I'd only had to meet one. The, you asked about Jerry Ficello. It's Ficello, by the way. I sat where you're sitting for 12 years. Jerry and I butted heads all the time, okay? It's no secret. Jerry thinks he's smarter than the council. He thinks he's smarter than planning. He thinks he should run this city. Sorry, he's not. He's a civil engineer. He's met these people array saying, oh, we didn't follow what he came up with in his study. They did. You guys have, in the city, have followed everything he's asked as a condition. It's the way it should be. Jerry, if he had his way, I just want to go back. Emma will remember this if she's still on the line watching. The back in, just giving you some background, Jerry and I, back in, find it, back in the, on June 26, 23, I was having a meeting with Rochelle and Emma Goldsmith on the project. Jerry came in totally irate, screaming. Rochelle tried to slow him down. Jerry, we're doing this. He did not care. He was, made up his mind, he was not going to approve this project unless we did everything he wanted. And that's not the way this system works. So, I mean, the project has gone through. It's a great project. I know when it's done, they'll like the project. It'll be a start of something going the other direction. So, I'm not going to sit there and throw everybody under the bus and fight everybody. I didn't come up here to fight with Jerry or say something. But one of Jerry's big things was the plans, which he and I went around quite a bit. I have an architect, Lynn Sentner and Associates, is the architect for this project. G.T. Wong and Aaron Alburn. G.T. Wong in Sacramento is the civil engineer and planner. They also do drainage, hydrology. All the studies will be done. And now that, once we have entitlement, you, then you go out and you spend your $250,000, $300,000 to get where you got to start something. You don't spend that money till you have an entitlement. You have no project. Jerry Wooddale, the other way, wants you to go out and do all these plans and have the engineered stamp them and have everybody say, hey, I want this to look at. So, I know in a lot of the hearings, you guys never heard them, but I know in the planning they did. This is actually from the State of California Business and Professional Code establishes the time professionals are required, affixing their signatures and their license number to the plans and specifications that they are prepared and designed and registered professional architect and engineer's license in the state of California. I'm going to have to pick this up a little bit because I can see a little better. Business and Professional Code 5535, 5538, 6730, 6749. All final plans, specifications, reports, calculations for building structures that are not exempt. I'm going to stop there. The projects that are exempt, which Jerry talked about many times, was a single-family dwelling made out of wood. A multiple dwellings?
That's five minutes.
I'm sorry?
That's five minutes.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Canning. You will have three minutes afterwards as well to respond to the appellant's.
Okay, that's fine. I'll bring, I'll finish it then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, our three representatives of the appellant's.
My name is Lee Brooks, and my family is a landowner on the south part of the, of the project on Washington and corner of 108. And your circle of 360, or 300 degrees didn't work because I was never notified. We have three parcels down. We own about 20 acres. There's three names on it. I was not ever notified of the project till Mr. Pawnee, four weeks ago, notified me. I was not notified by the city or anything. So, that's my start. And, and we have an access on Washington, and we have an access on Oregon there. I don't want to lose that access to my secondary access to my property because of devour my property. Even the engineer, even though you guys are fighting with the engineers, said that. And I might need that secondary access to my property because I got three parcels down there. An elimination of the secondary, secondary access to my property violates two, two very fundamental private property rights, which are the rights of access and a right to do with all my property, what I choose. And if you go forward with this property or this project or whatever, before you vote on, I want to make sure, see the plans. I don't want to lose access to that property, my secondary. I have that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
Hey, good evening. Lee Pawnee, 55 Toolumee Street. Thank you for changing the time for us. It was nice to be doing this before the vegetarian meeting, but it was really also, we were planning on being at the very end. So, just note that sometimes when you do it last minute, it, it can change how people react.
My apologies for that.
No, no, it's, we're good. Thank you to the city and council for taking, city council for taking time to hear this appeal. This is an important decision for both our neighborhood and for all city taxpayers. City staff have been made aware of the numerous issues this project that I and others have brought up at multiple meetings. I have analyzed this proposal with the help of professionals, and we've come up with six to eight serious issues that should give you pause. And, yeah, I just, I have been going through this a lot to hear that, you know, this meets everything is really hard to hear because there are multiple parts in the general plan that talk about protecting trees, that protecting hillsides. So, I don't think it, I don't, I wouldn't say that, that the project actually, you know, is compliant with everything. And here are two examples. On page 27 of the Sonora General Plan 2020 Draft EIR, March 2007, there's a table for maximum building intensity. And it lists the commercial zone as having a maximum of eight dwelling units per acre. This is in the general plan EIR, eight dwelling units per acre. The proposal we are discussing is for 12 units to be built on 0.7 acres. So, this seems like a pretty big issue. Municipal Code 17.24.020 states that the, in, under the heading, uses allowed by right in the commercial zone are B, multifamily dwelling above ground level. Now, I know some of one will want to argue that South Washington's street side is the ground level, but that would only be true if the parking and entrances of the proposed apartments were on that side. They are not. They are on the ground level of Oregon Street. And there are other issues from CEQA problems to the city piece of property that would be given to the developer. And as a taxpayer, I don't want you to ignore these because passing this plan today will mean that you are forcing city taxpayers to be financially responsible for the legal defense of this project should it go to court. And that's one of the issues of having everything, passing this now and then saying everything will be taken care of later in the stipulations of the project. Having them ahead of time, we can be guaranteed of that because otherwise, city takes on the responsibility of saying this project meets everything when it actually does not, especially those two codes I just pointed out. If the city, Sonora City Council passes this project as it stands right now, you will be saying, we, the city council, fully aware of the serious problems brought to our attention, are willing to overlook these and are ready to make the citizens of Sonora legally and financially responsible for these issues and the others of this project going forward. And that is something that I, and I believe the majority of taxpayers, don't want to see happen. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Fred Buess, 911 Oregon Street. I appreciated that the councilwoman expressed an interest in hearing what the, the neighborhood has to say about, about this. And every time I've wanted to make a change in a piece of property that affected the neighbors, I've been told I needed to contact everyone within a 300-foot radius and, and get their input. Here is that input. And I never heard the results of that, but every single piece of property, from the railroad tracks to the bypass, from Washington Street to Hospital Road, was contacted and signed a petition to stop this project. That's the result of a canvassing of the neighborhood. Every single neighbor, every single address, if you don't have this, you should. I've turned it into the city several times. I hope it's on your desk. Here are their signatures. Every single address, every single property owner within a quarter mile of this project hates it. Rhonda and I purchased the cottage at 911 Oregon Street in 2016 as part of our estate planning to be a safe, quiet, manageable, permanent home for our severely autistic son, Andy, who will require 24-hour care for the rest of his life. Our entire estate is dedicated to Andy's nurture and well-being. When we are gone, he will have no voice or advocate. And so, we have made these plans for him. We chose this quiet neighborhood with very little traffic and just a few neighbors who keep to themselves because it was ideally suited to Andy's need for limited traffic and noise, a degree of isolation while still being close enough to town for caregivers, nurses, and maintenance people to have easy access to him and to the property. Sonora seemed committed to preserving its rural, profoundly historic, small-town, slow-paced nature with quiet, affordable neighborhoods of single-family homes. And we felt comfortable making plans for Andy here. An added benefit for an avid train enthusiast such as he is was the occasional comings and goings of the Sierra Railroad, which he can, for the time being at least, observe from his bedroom window. Of course, we never dreamed that the city council might approve plans to double the neighborhood's residence on a single lot right across the street from him, multiply the traffic on Oregon Street by an order of magnitude where he will live and walk with his caregivers for the next 60 years, create a commercial parking lot with additional traffic and lighting outside his bedroom window, and turn the entire nature and character of his surroundings upside down. I met personally with the owners and renters of every property from the railroad tracks to the bypass, from Washington Street to Hospital Road, and showed them the plans for the development at 956 Oregon Street. Every single one asked how they could oppose this, and they signed the position to, petition to appeal. You have in front of me a list of those signatures representing every address. Many were very emotional regarding the life-changing decision you're about to make on their behalf and how that decision will affect them directly. If this moves forward, I have no doubt that a large coalition of those affected will participate to the best of their ability and the limits of their resources to oppose this legally. And it seems to me that eventually someone in a position to matter will take note of the fact that every single neighbor and member of this community stands in staunch opposition to what is being proposed here and have compassion. I hope that you, the city council, will be the leaders who show compassion and stand for this entire community tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Booth. And with that, our applicant may return to address those issues, and you have three minutes. We will have public comment after that for everyone. And everyone will have three minutes after that. But this way, while it's fresh, you can address any issues or finish what you were mentioning before.
Well, I'll finish this quickly because I only have three minutes. But, so, your items that are exempt are garage and some other structures, okay? And the final plans, specifications, structures are exempt, prepared by a licensed structural engineer at the time of permit issuance. Jerry just couldn't get that. He fought it all the way. That being said, with my time short, this project has meant everything. I mean, we're not, I sat there, we're not going to make everybody happy. It's just not going to work. But we've done everything that we were required to do and then some on this project. And I think this project is well-needed in this city. We need to start doing something on that part of town. We don't have a lot of flat ground. And the flat ground we have has got bonds against it that nobody can build on because they can never be freed up. So, with that said, I would hope that you look deep and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canning. Seems appropriate. We want to be as informed as possible, and I. Just out of curiosity, and I know someone will probably bring this up about the height difference. Is the reason for the height difference, the, what the max is 35 feet and looking to go to 40 feet, does that have to do with the R factor that is basically heavy-handed down from the state? The insulation factor where they have to raise the roof to put extra?
You have certain grades for ADA to get into a project that you have to comply with. And that pretty well establishes the one, okay? The other second is, there's got to be a plenum area in the way these are designed. But we have to meet that ADA first. And that tells us what we can do with the building. By the way, Tim Miller, and I think you've got a copy of it, if you read that, and he was on the commission, I mean, he was, he said that it's calculated wrong the way they did 35 feet. But that's fine. That being said, it's, we're two-story on the Oregon side, and we're three-story on the Washington side. It's that simple.
Cool. Thank you.
Okay.
So, thank you. And with that, the rest of the public is welcome to add their comments and enlighten us.
Mr. Mayor, if you're looking for enlightenment from me, better be really hurting. Anyway.
I'm really hurting. I'm a timberfoller, so.
My name is Chris Garnon. I'm a local businessman. I've been a realtor in this county for, oh, gosh, over 40 years. I like to preface my remarks by saying I have total appreciation for concerns by neighbors about anything that happens in their neighborhood, any people that see changes through new development patterns. I totally get that. I've been witness to that for my whole professional career. That being said, this is technically, based on the zoning and the compliance to the general plan, this is a down zone from the 100 different flavors of commercial development that you could have there presented to you. I mean, I've heard you mention earlier the concerns about what could be built there under zoning designation. Well, it could be, it could be a lot more intense and have a lot more impact on this neighborhood if there were other things that happened besides a 12-unit apartment complex with relatively benign office spaces or retail spaces on the ground level. The housing component of this provides an opportunity for, or to expand our housing stocks for market housing, which in essence really is affordable housing for a lot of people that live and work in Sonora. So, I consider this not only a classic infill kind of a project, but this is not sprawl. It meets, I think, a lot of the criteria. It's been scrutinized by staff. This is, I think, a very contemporary and logical development for this project site. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay. But, no, I have a question, but I think it's more for the engineers. But thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I urge you to reject the appeal.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Kathy Burby, and I've been a resident of Toolumee County for 44 years. For the last two decades, the city and the county have faced For the last two decades, the city and the county have faced budget problems. You keep trying to tax your way out of it, but it's not going to work. We need to grow. We do need housing. This property owner has met all of the requirements that staff has asked of him. Even some from the city engineer addressed all those concerns, and this is about private property rights also. I'd like you to keep that in mind. I know, as Chris said, you can't make everybody happy, but we have to remember people do have private property rights in this country. Thank you.
So, thank you very much.
Thank you. I would just like to remind you, from my recollection, that Jerry Ficillo came back after he retired, and you hired him, he basically was a contract engineer, and then he cost, I don't know, $40,000, $49,000, $50,000 a year, and you chose not to renew his contract, and you chose to hire an engineering firm, and now the cost is approximately $250,000 a year. But as I recall, that was a unanimous vote of 5-0. So you all chose to hire Dewberry as your engineer of choice, and they have given you their recommendation. And as someone who's been around a long time, I had some feelings that there was some axes to be ground, but I'm not going to get up here and go down that rabbit hole. And I appreciate the neighbors' concern, but this neighborhood was not zoned residential. It was zoned general commercial. And if you're looking for a retirement home in a quiet residential environment, it's very important when you purchase property, your own property, to check what the zoning is and the designations because they may not be what you think they are, and then you get a surprise. So this area has been zoned general commercial for a long time. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good evening again. Mike Lemke, representing Topeka County Building Industry, but we support the project and reject the appeal. Any project going through the process will go through multiple layers of review, design, opinion, and then oftentimes there'll be contradictory opinion from different consultants. And in the end, you have to smooth out the irregularities and come through to where you have a feasible project. This project helps as one of our significant housing needs. There is a significant housing need. That could be a very lengthy discussion from different perspectives of legal, state, government definitions, et cetera, but on the bottom line, we have a significant need for housing rejuvenation, investment, and additional from across all economic sectors in our community. This is a very innovative project on a well-traveled commercial industrial corridor that we have coming into the city, and it has a very innovative application of mixed use of commercial, residential, et cetera. This is the way of the future when you have dense urban areas with these heavy needs, and I think it's a fine application. One of the most significant aspects we have to this project is that it's local. When you have local, you have experience, track record, and an ownership that is concerned with longevity. They are looking at a project not from today's perspective but from tomorrow's perspective and from long term. They're anticipating future investments. They're anticipating maintaining their names and reputations. Like with all great plans, we go through, grace of all, the D-Day invasion. Every leader would tell you that we had these plans, and no matter how extensive they were, we had to react to conditions on the field and what we encounter. When you have local ownership, local investment, and people who are applying themselves to a project that have that level of concern, they're able to keep that concern to the highest level and produce the most quality project that you can wish for. That's one of many benefits of approving this project, and we look for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lemke. Any further public comment? Well, you've kind of, you've both had your... Let me consult with our attorney. I am open, but I, at that point, then we would also need to give our... Doug, for the appellant's who have already spoken for their five minutes each, do they get another bite at the apple here?
They do not.
They cannot? Okay. Thank you very much. My apologies there, but... So with no further public comment, I'll bring it back to the council for discussion and a decision.
Okay, so I have two questions for, one for the council, which was, one gentleman, Mr. Vining, I believe, said that it's only okayed for eight units, and maybe this is a Tyler question, and then the Canning project is for 12 units. Can you address that?
Sure. In some ways, Mr. Ponnick shared the answer with you as part of his statement, which was a project that is multifamily, over-commercial, does not have a dwelling unit limit, and so that's why Mr. the applicant's project could, you know, request up to 12 units and actually could do, could request more, but I think just the nature of the site limits it.
Okay, thanks. And then secondly, second complainant said that he will have no access. Is that a secondary access? Do we have a map? Is that verifiable?
So in, so that was one of the concerns that was brought up by the previous city engineer, and it's one of the conditions of approval that we tried to highlight within the presentation, but essentially says improvements to Oregon Street cannot impede future access to the adjacent parcels south of the project area. So if staff gets any type of a site plan, grading plan, or other plan that impedes access to the adjacent parcels south of the project, we will reject it. Full stop.
So to clarify, the complaint, that his access will be stopped is not really accurate?
Well, it's protected in the condition of approval.
A better term. Okay. Those are my only two questions for now. Thank you.
Along that line, though, is that protected then with an easement or just the development of the road to create the access? What is the, what is the way that that is done?
Yeah, that's a good question and maybe one for one of our engineers, but I think, you know, essentially, the way that we stub out Mariposa, the way Mariposa is designed in Oregon, you know, is concluded there where those meet. We would need to get some clarity on what would consider, you know, elimination of future access there. So I think just because you've got some slopes to deal with there, I don't know exactly what that would look like, but for example, you couldn't have, you know, a retaining wall that then crossed Oregon Street, or you couldn't have some other feature that made it, you know...
Inaccessible.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Merrill, any questions?
I do have a comment. Perhaps one of the most troubling things I heard this evening was certainly the letter that got submitted of all the local property owners essentially saying they're opposed to this, and the claims that they were not notified are really concerning to me. Now, I can't personally verify that statement, whether it's true or false, but I will direct everyone's attention. I mean, this is on page one of our agenda. Our vision statement states, "With leadership and integrity, the city of Sonora commits to excellent service through collaboration and innovation." Now, I think we've certainly achieved innovation here. I agree with the notion that this is essentially a downgrade from strictly commercial property to residential, which I think is a step in the right direction. But I was just wondering, Tyler, if you could comment as to the truth of the statement that none of these parties were contacted, because that is incredibly concerning to me, and if that is true, I think we do owe it to them to maybe have, you know, like the special meeting like we originally discussed. However, I will personally attest to Mr. Canning's statement that this has been a project, you know, a couple of years in the making. It's not something new to me. You know, I voted in favor of ceding the partial city right of way with the stipulation that there was safe access for fire, and I believe Chief New even commented on that at one point, saying, hey, you know, she felt comfortable with the accessibility and the fire safety of the proposed changes. So it's really just, you know, if, if we're going to start with page one with that vision statement, I want to make sure that we did collaborate with the community because that is ultimately why we're all here to begin with, is, you know, the people put us here, and if we're not properly communicating with them on this project, we're not doing our jobs as representatives. So if you could speak to that component?
Sure, thank you. So I did hear from a couple of the residents who shared, I did not get the notice, and the wife of one of the appellant's did come into the office, and we reviewed which property was theirs, and I showed then the address that was included for that property, and sometimes you get properties that are owned jointly, and so there is one person of record that is associated with that, and that may not have been, you know, that may not have been shared amongst the owners, but the legal contact that we get from the assessor's office was mailed the notice, even if that didn't get translated to the other owners.
And is that verifiable, like through postmarks or anything? I just really want to make sure that we're, you know, working with fully accurate information when it comes to decision-making here.
Yes. I mean, we did not send postage or send receipt, you know, we did not pay for it, but we can demonstrate, you know, that process and who got mailed notices to what addresses.
And this also just kind of proves my previous statement that, you know, consistency is really important in everything that we do, and I know, Tyler, you've only been with us, you know, for about a half a year now, and I know it was Rochelle was originally kind of leading this project, and furthermore, you know, this is the last meeting of this council, you know, sitting before you today, so, you know, as much as possible, I'd rather not keep kicking things down the road just to have the same people involved in some of this decision-making, but, you know, we don't live in an ideal world. I understand that, you know, we're trying to find a compromise here. I just, you know, I really want to make sure that we're living up to our vision statement here because I don't, the last thing I want to do is burn the people at Sonora and leave people, you know. I said at the last meeting, compromise, no one's ever going to be happy, but I do feel like this, and at least if I take Mr. Canning at his word, is a step in the right direction in terms of both preventing, you know, what I might perceive as unreasonable commercial use or like more invasive commercial use versus what we're trying to do, which is, again, find a compromise between the original zoning and then rezoning it to be a little bit more palatable for the character of the neighborhood, so...
Thank you. Councilman Sagerstrom?
Yeah, I just wanted to also clarify that one of the appellant's said that the city would be giving property to Mr. Canning, and I believe that property is under negotiation for sale. So I know there's, there was some innuendos that there was collusion between the city and the, and the Canning project, and I, I don't know, I mean, I have never seen evidence of it, but I would like to clear that up, too. I think that the city has acted in upright, you know, process through this whole, whole debate, and then in the letter here that's signed by everyone, there is nothing that says that they were not notified. So, I mean, they signed basically as a protest against the development.
Councilman Hawkins?
It gets to be my turn.
Just, are we indeed negotiating to, to sell the little plot of land there?
Well, I think it's safe to say that whenever a piece of public property is going to leave public ownership, it has to go through a very specific process, and one of the conditions of approval outlines that the project goes through that process in, you know, in order to be acquired in a fashion that is consistent with state law. I know that didn't answer your question exactly, but that our original discussion took place before I was here, so...
So, thank you, Tyler. Councilman Hawkins?
So I guess I'll address a couple things. Mr. Canning brought up the fact of Mr. Ficillo and him, and I sat on his council for four years with them, and I can absolutely attest that if Bill said yes, Mr. Ficillo said no, and if Mr., you know, it just, it never, it never worked out for whatever reason. I get along with Jerry really well, but the fact is, is that serving with Bill and his council at the time, Bill was always looking for ways to add to Sonora. He never looked at a cheap shot to make money off the city. That I know, and that's one of the reasons I like the project because it's not, there's nothing outlandish about it. It's literally a 12-unit apartment building with a nice parking lot and some small retail spaces of some sort. I've seen some of the buildings that Mr. Canning has built. He's built several, how many O'Reilly's have you built? Yes, and you can compare them to ones that were not built by him, and you can see the difference, you know.
Let's just consider sticks and stones on Washington Street, which is beautiful.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, he's, his projects are good. He keeps to his word, and I, you know, the only thing I hate to hear is that it took so long to get through the city process. One of the things I'll say, and it's just indicative of California and just this county, and the city is supposed to be the easy one to build in, but when there's so much on top of you, builders just tend to leave, and they're going to Nevada, or they're going to the Valley because the Valley has made it extremely easy to build, but they still got to go by what the state wants to set up. I'm not going to get into the names, but I'll say this, I know several of the people that signed this have a real beef with Mr. Canning, and it goes back probably 25 to 30 years. One of them owns a parcel near me and illegally built another dwelling inside of a two-apartment dwelling and never went by plans or anything and said, oh, I've got my property rights. There's another one in there that code enforcement had to go out and seriously investigate, but suddenly Mr. Canning's project has to come under a vast microscope because they don't want his project there. Guess what I'm saying is there's a little bit of hypocrisy in some of the signatures here. Others, I completely agree that the neighbors should be concerned. I would be, too, if somebody said, hey, I'm going to build an apartment building, you know, 200 feet from your house. But the reality is, is that it's a nice-looking project. It's followed, what was it, four of the seven things? Yes, four of the seven. So it's a nice project. It's going to meet all the environmental concerns, all the drainage concerns. It's nothing outlandish. There's no flashing lights, nothing that's going to be distracting, and I don't know. I like the project, but again, I've had to keep quiet till now, and again, I know Bill is not going to do anything that is going to harm the city. I, and I'll just say this personally, I, when Bill was mayor, he lost more money from his business because he was trying to add to... because he was trying to add to Sonora. So I cannot see him trying to hurt the city. And that's just, that's just going by his character. But, so I'm for this, but I get the reasons why the neighborhood would not want it at the same time, because it's something new and different. But we could also put, you know, somebody could come into the gas station tomorrow, and I don't even know if he'd even have to go before the planning commission because of the way it's zoned. So I think this is a really good project. 12 apartments and several retail spaces.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. I had one question. I'm not sure to whom I address it exactly. So I'll start with you, Tyler, but we might need our engineers. And that is, in a couple of the letters received, there was talk of a secondary TUD sewer line, it sounded like. What is that exactly? And how is that affected one way or the other? And, I mean, I wasn't even aware that some places had two access points to different sewer lines.
Well, I'll invite Carly to come up and share a little more about that. My understanding is that, you know, they've got infrastructure in the area based on, you know, the nature of the project, that some of those, some of those lines, some of that infrastructure would need to be moved. And so it would be the applicant's responsibility to do that. But she may have more detail on how that works exactly. But I think that's the gist of it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Buchholz.
Hello, so, yep, just going off of memory, I believe there is a condition in there that is, was put in there by TUD that says that, I think the concern was the depth that the sewer line would be at after the retaining walls were built 17 feet abouts, where an improvement would likely have to be made that would bring connection to that service line, that sewer line, up to a reasonable depth. So whether that's a stubout that's at a reasonable depth or relocating the line itself. The condition, I believe, and do you have it in front of you, Tyler? Places that responsibility on the applicant to do so.
Okay, so while it is obviously concerned, it's not something that we, it's not a hurdle we can't get over and that the applicant will be taken care of.
Correct.
Thank you very much.
The applicant shall coordinate with TUD regarding the water and sewer connections and capacity at the site and the surrounding lines. TUD engineers shall approve the plan. The project shall be subject to all conditions and standards required by TUD as shown in the comment letter. That was, that they submitted, very similar to Jerry's.
Thank you. So I'll add my comments now, and that is, I grew up in the country a lot, and I really understand the enthusiasm for having, you know, wide vistas in front of one's home and how attractive that is, essentially a private park. And while I lived on a farm, we sort of had it that way. But this is commercial space right in front of all of the appellants. And, I mean, maybe a blacksmith shop with the noise would be outlawed, but there are a lot of commercial applications that would probably be far less desirable. Moreover, we really need housing in this county. We need someplace for our kids to be able to stay. And, I mean, if they want to live here, we need good jobs and we need housing. And this is a project that I think really fits that role very nicely. So I am, I am supportive of it. And I apologize to the appellants because I, in your position, would doubtless feel the same and feel damaged and hurt by it. But something is going to go in there. It's not a private park. That's private property where something will be built. And I think this is a good project for that property. So with that, are there any comments or trying to persuade anyone before we make a decision? Oh, I do have one question. Mr. White, there was a question about liability because of the either negotiation or thought of gift of city property to the applicant. Is that, in fact, something that we need to be concerned with?
No.
Thank you very much. That's curt and clear. So.
I, I'd like to make a motion. I've heard the arguments on both sides. I'm not gonna, in interest of brevity, I think some really good compelling arguments are made. Something is actually going to go in there. You can say no to this, but maybe something even worse would go in there. It is a commercial district. We can't keep taxing people for revenue. The staff was very thorough scrutinizing this. Mr. Canning's been very patient. We've been trying to get developers into the city for a very long time. And he's been able to do it. And like Councilmember Hawkins and Plummer said, they've seen his work and it is very nice. So I gotta respect that. So with that, I would like to make a motion to uphold the May 13 decision to the planning motion to approve based on the identified conditions. And that would be Resolution Number 061724.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay. Any abstentions? Passes 5-0, Madam Clerk. Thank you to the public for your time and indulgence. With that, we will move on.
Mayor, sorry to interrupt. There's a second component of this piece, which we won't be able to finalize today, but.
But we're gonna open the public hearing on it.
Yeah, so the secondary piece is that the property does need the rezone from general commercial to commercial. But because of a typo on the agenda, we can open the hearing. We can take public comment on that action. But then we'll need to continue the formal action to the July 1 meeting.
Thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing. Well, Councilor White, is there something that needs to be changed in that?
No, I just wanted to add that, in addition to this, not, that no decision will be made tonight, there will be public comment at the hearing in July. And so this is, I just want to make it clear that this would, that there will be an opportunity to speak at the time in which a decision will be made by the council.
So, but, and do we allow public comment at this meeting as well?
Yes, because it was agendized, we're required to open it up. But to be clear, no decision will be made tonight. And there will be another opportunity for public comment at the July.
Thank you. So with that, I will open the public hearing on the rezoning of this parcel. And Tyler, is this, this parcel, is the other parcel a separate? Public hearing?
So this includes.
Both of them?
Both, the applicant's parcel and the city-initiated rezone.
Okay, great, thank you. And do you lead that?
You can go ahead and open the public hearing. And if we, okay, so.
We don't, yeah, we don't need a staff report, Mayor, because we're not taking action. This is just if somebody wanted to speak on it because they came.
Okay, so do we take public comment?
Yes, because we can't take any action. So there'd be no need for a staff report.
Great, that clarifies a lot. So is there any public comment on the rezoning of this parcel? And I believe the parcel just to the north from general commercial to commercial? Seeing none, I will close public comment, bring it back to the council. And do we just close the public hearing with a conveyance to July 1?
Yes.
Okay, so with that, we're gonna close it and convey this to the City Council Meeting of July 1, 2024. And with that, we get to return to the new public hearing where we go to budget. Consider approval. This is item A, consider approval of the financial year 2425 proposed operating and capital improvement budgets as presented, Melissa Ead, City Administrator, and Chris Gorski, City Administrative Services. And I'm so glad to see you here, Administrator Ead. And our house has not burned down.
Neither is Copperopolis, hopefully.
Always the optimist, always. So, good.
Good evening. Chris Gorski, Administrative Services Director. This is the presentation for the fiscal year 2425 proposed budget. We do have a PowerPoint that's up on the screen. The budget has been developed and reviewed by the administrative team, including City Finance Committee, the department heads, the finance director, and the city administrator. The city has prioritized funding based on the city council's strategic goals and priorities. The fiscal year 2425 budget includes total city revenues of 18.3 million. Of that, the general fund revenues are 14.7. The budget includes city expenditures of 14.8 million and total general fund expenditures of 11.3 million. The budget includes an estimated Measure Y revenue, which is the essential services sales tax that we passed in 2022, of 4.3 million. The budget represents a status quo budget, which includes only increases from things like CalPERS inflation that has affected basically everything we do and negotiated bargaining unit increases. As part of the presentation, we also always refer to these council priorities. Those were determined in the organizational review and budget stabilization plan or study that we did in last year. And there are numbered priorities that are tied to that report. The budget presentation includes a list of supplemental requests that were outside the status quo budgets, and these will be presented at the end. So first up, general fund revenues. The very right column is the 2425 budget. You can see for sales and use tax, we expect 7.852 million. Property tax is 999,000. The VLF backfill property tax is 503,000. Franchise fees, 160,000. Business licenses, 131,000. TOT is 608,000. The cannabis public benefit fee is 700,000. Other licenses and permits are 118,000. Intra-governmental is 159,000. Charges for services, 80,000. Interest then is 225,000, which is because we've basically saved fiscal '23, '24's sales tax for Measure Y. So total revenues, 11.67. And then there's a transfer in, and it's primarily for Measure I, which is a half-cent sales tax the city has passed. So total revenues for the general fund are 14.681 million. Getting a little details on revenues. Sales tax, the forecast for this next year have started to slow as recession fears have been growing for some time. And I think eventually we will have that recession that we're concerned with. Measure Y, which was the sales tax, was effective for the city April 1st. And that will generate around 4.3 million. TOT revenues had returned to pre-pandemic levels. But there, again, there's some concerns that we've had with inflation and the economy and how that moves forward. As we've seen with the revised short-term rental ordinance, we could see some benefit from that to TOT revenues. City fees no longer cover the cost to provide the services. Part of the budget presentation today is a fee update. And we'll get to that in a few minutes. The idea of a fee update, when a fee does not cover the cost of providing the service, other city revenue sources subsidize that cost. And nearly every case, that is the general fund subsidizing that cost. Cannabis public benefit fee is now the third-largest revenue for the city after sales tax and property tax. For fiscal '24, '25, we anticipate around $700,000. This next slide is general fund expenditures. The far-right column, highlighted in gray, is expenditures for next year. You can see total salaries and benefits of 8.2 million. Total operating expenditures of 2.5 million. We do have capital projects, which are primarily the vehicle leases for PD of 202,000. Total expenditures are 10.9 million. And then a transfer out of 342,000, which includes things like our self-insured dental benefits and a transfer out for the, what we call the SEPT, which is the CalPERS pre-funding trust that we have. So total expenditures for the general fund are 11.296 million. A little detail, personnel or salaries and benefits account for 73% of the general fund expenditures. The city did complete a compensation study last year, and that was used to agree to or to negotiate these tentative agreements that are also attached to this budget. These are new five-year contracts for the Sonora Police Officers Association, the Sonora Management Employees Association, and the Sonora Confidential Employees Association. The study that we did last year for compensation, those help to protect organizations to achieve human resource objectives such as employee recruitment, retention, pay satisfaction, and to contain labor costs. We have been paying chronically under market for basically a generation. And that has always been a contributing factor to the city's difficulty in recruiting talent. The city is proposing a set aside of a labor reserve fund to pay for these costs that are included in the new MOUs that you will see in the near future. This labor reserve will pay for basically the entire increase over the next five years. Status quo, part of the budget. Each department was asked to provide a status quo budget, which included no changes other than what, you know, contracted changes, certain contracts that we have that do just escalate each year. We also have some CalPERS increases that are unavoidable for us. And insurance costs have gone up about 13%. Also, energy, fuel, electricity have continued to increase. Insurances like liability and workers' comp, they have gone over, the last few years, they've steadily risen. And in next year, they're increasing 13%. And that alone is a change of $87,000 for the general fund. In fiscal '24, '25, we're also having to pay our CalPERS unfunded contribution. And that is increased next year due to the CalPERS losses that they experienced in '21, '22. They lost 6.1% during that fiscal year. And that increased the general fund's contribution for next year of $174,000. So we can now see the general fund expenditures by department. You can see how the, each department is funded. City Council, 234,000. City Clerk, 124,000. City Administration, 319. Administrative Services, 771. IT is 44,000. Community Development, 759,000. Engineering, 274,000. Opera Hall, 37,000. PD is just under 5 million. Fire Department is 1.9 million. Public Works, 1.2. And then our General Services, which is everything else, is 613,000. That's it. We come up with 11.296 in total expenditures for the general fund. And then we have a nice little chart that shows how that breaks out. And we can see that six. and we can see that sixty-one percent of the general fund expenditures goes to safety, which is police and fire. And then community development, Public Works, and Administrative Services are the other larger wedges in that chart.
Is it okay if we just go back to that slide? I have an immediate question I wanted to get clarification on. On the city council proposed budget, it says two hundred and thirty four thousand, five hundred dollars. What is that money going towards? Because it's certainly not anyone up on the stais.
No, it isn't. And if you look at the budget online, you can actually see the details of the budget. That's primarily legal fees. That's our contract with Churchill White.
If I could add one other thing that I think it wasn't obvious until you get down to the nuts and bolts of different parts, is that the costs for propane, HVAC, all that is spread through all of the departments. So it adds in what looks like it should be cheaper or less expensive, just budget items.
Just wanted clarification.
Yeah, and there's details. We can look at the details if you have more questions.
Because I believe, what, like eleven thousand of that annually, or less than fifteen thousand is actually going to city council members, just for clarification for the public?
It's a smaller, and we can see it.
All right.
And so we do have these budget departments for city administration that includes the, these departments are all included in city administration, which is the city council, clerk, administrator, administrative services, IT, fleet, general service, and opera hall. And then, as you've asked here, this is the city councils. The city council pay, if you will, they're stipend, is fourteen thousand dollars for the full year. That does include the update that was passed last year, and that was, I believe, a twenty-one percent increase, something like that. And then you can see the services line item at two hundred and five. And of that, it's a hundred and seventy-four is legal, is the Churchill White contract. The other services in that line item include things like the Zoom meeting and then the software that runs the agendas. Next one is city clerk. We do have a full-time deputy city clerk that's being charged to this department for the first time, and that's why this is up. And so the city clerk, and again, like Mark said, that we do spread all the cost of power, water, maintenance, things like that go to each of the departments that are affected or live or work out of city hall. Administrator, again, primarily the city administrator, and we do spread, again, those costs throughout these departments. Administrative Services includes myself and a couple of other employees. It's HR, finance, IT. And then IT is basically just the hardware and software that we use on a day-to-day. And we are planning some upgrades, and we'll see those as we get to our supplemental list. Fleet Management, last year, we decided to go with an enterprise lease, and that includes leased vehicles plus a lease maintenance program. And so this department went away. There was some small charges for the, basically unemployment for the former employee that were charged to this department, but next year, we're not anticipating any costs. And then General Services, at the top are revenues, and this is where we collect property tax, sales tax, pretty much all the big revenues that are not departmental identified, and then the expenditures that are not identified to a single department, like the OPEB benefit, which is the retirees' medical benefit, is charged to this. We do split our TOT revenues, twenty-five percent to the visit to Almond County. That is also charged here. And then all the transfers out for the general fund are also charged here. Opera Hall, this is now through the, through the.
Chamber.
Chamber. Like, I'll forget that. So there's some revenue we anticipate to get back, but the total general fund cost is actually down a little bit, and we don't have to run it out of the city hall, which is very important, I think. And then next is Tyler Somerset. We'll be talking about his budget.
All right. Quick introduction here, reintroduction to the Community Development Department. We are currently a team of four in some ways. We've got Irma Gomez in code enforcement, one day a week. So we've got her on Tuesdays. Brian Odom, who does our building inspections and permits. We've got him four days a week, Monday through Thursday. And then Emma Goldsmith, who you know, who takes on projects for us on a task basis. Within community development, we've got various programs, projects, and services, and those include basically building, planning, code enforcement, and special programs and projects. We give a lot of permits out. We did a quick tabulation, roughly three hundred and fifty permits that we did in 2023. So that's a pretty busy clip. That's from everything from, you know, a solar project on your house to a remodel to, you know, an encroachment permit. We also deal with planning in land division, as we talked about earlier in this agenda. We do permits for local businesses that are occupying their, working out of their homes or using their homes for short-term rentals and for special events in our community spaces. We've got planning commission meetings that run out of the Community Development Department. Those are once a month, on the second Tuesday. Parks, Rec, and Beautification Committee meetings on an as-needed basis. We are constantly monitoring the general plan and doing our best to implement that, working on housing programs. We've got all sorts of mandated kind of state reporting requirements for everything from grants to, you know, how many building permits are we given? And how many dwelling units are we building locally? And so those are our expectations on a monthly basis. Dragon Gulch and the development of that property, along with the maintenance of it, and the farmer's market, which happens between May and October. So some of our strategic priorities for this upcoming year include economic development, looking at the strategic planning process that the city recently went through. We have in our budget an economic development coordinator. So this is a person who would really start to focus in on some of the things that we saw in that strategic plan. And so I've tried to outline, you know, what some of those strategic priority, some of those strategic priorities are as far as, you know, within the document. So supporting our local businesses is huge. We see it time and again where we've got somebody who wants to start a new business, and they just don't even know where to start at times, and what, you know, the rental of, you know, a facility in downtown looks like, and getting a business permit, doing tenant improvements. So I think we have been working with some of our newer businesses. I've listed a couple here, but it's very exciting because these folks come in, they are, you know, taking a big step in their lives, and we'd love to be able to give them the support that they need to, you know, successfully launch their first business. In some cases, it is, you know, it could look like business incentives or different programs. I don't know exactly what that will look like yet, but you'll remember at our last meeting, you had a couple of young gentlemen get up here and talk excitedly about this opportunity to take a building in Sonora and turn it into something beautiful and to rebuild this city. And it's that kind of energy that we really want to unleash in this community by giving, you know, these people the support that they need and want to try to make things happen, because these are our future leaders. We have all sorts of opportunities, I think, to use our shared spaces in more dynamic ways, whether that's events at Dragon Gulch 5Ks, or biking events, or, you know, other activities that draw people in, encourage folks to stay locally and participate in an event. So we are really excited about, you know, this whole, you know, palette of ways that we can start to support local economic development, including, of course, you know, partnership with the Sonora Chamber and a lot of the energy and the events that they're bringing to town, often new ones, like the one that we just had, El Campo de Sonora, which was a really, you know, fun way to highlight who our community is, but in a dynamic way. So it's not like, oh, we're doing the same event. We always do. Those ones are awesome. We've got several of those, but it's also nice to be dynamic. Continuing with a few other kind of strategic priorities that we would like to accomplish, a couple of them are in progress already. We've got the iWork software. Staff are actively working towards launching that. That will make us, you know, more efficient. That will allow folks to, you know, pull a permit online. That will allow us to coordinate with, within the departments more seamlessly. I would love to see us build out, further build out Dragon Gulch. We've got a master plan for that. You know, we have been, you know, scratching in new trail here and there, but there are additional facilities that are planned for that park. It is, I think, exceptionally unique to have a property like that, that hundred acres right central in town, and it creates an energy because it's so close. And in life, the things that are close, the things that are convenient are easier to do more often, and so I think that's a huge opportunity for this community. As you know, short-term rental ordinance was another strategic priority, and so now it'll be the implementation of that ordinance, which has been passed in supporting, you know, our community of folks that want to invest in Sonora in that way. Again, you know, looking to the Sonora Chamber, looking to our partners within the community to partner with them and support their efforts. Within the budget, we are asking for an additional day for Irma in code enforcement, which is one of these activities that the more you do, the more you can do. And because we haven't had anyone in that position for some time, you know, I'm really excited for the work that she's doing with one day. But if we were to get a second day, that would really spike, you know, what she's able to accomplish. I think, speaking of good energy, we've got some great things going with Lineberg Street. You know, we closed it, we started to improve it, and already, we're starting to see this need to grow that, you know, kind of downtown pedestrian environment. Got the farmer's market, you know, we've got Lineberg, you know, we're getting requests for the other side of Lineberg. How do we make this, you know, a very walkable, vibrant downtown? And then part of that is captured with, you know, the work that was done in partnership with Blue Zones for the Stewart Street concepts as well, starting to tie down or tie together our downtown streetscape. So closing out here, we know we've got some general plan work to do, and so we have within the budget the kind of getting going on that process. But, you know, general plans can be very expensive, and they can take a long time. And so how do we structure this to where we get some real short-term wins while we also move the city where we need to be long-term as far as growth potential? Addressing graffiti reduction, which we see, you know, time to time within the community. Thinking about city-sponsored projects, and we'll talk a little bit more about what those look like. And then, again, supporting this energy that's starting to resonate from the downtown, but working on an encroachment ordinance that will allow us, how do we, you know, enjoy dining, you know, outside? How do we, you know, enjoy music in the downtown area? How do we create these public spaces where folks can have, you know, their, you know, wares on the sidewalk, but then the city also has the ability to control how that happens? And lastly, you know, development of the Use Locals First Ordinance Program, that would be comboed with some of our economic development coordinators' goals. So what are we working on currently? We are trying to close out some projects with the fire department. We've got engines and equipment, so we're trying to button those up. You know, we really want to foster a reputation that the city is the place where things are happening, that our service, you know, is excellent, that we are helpful, that we are going to do whatever it takes to make sure that folks are, you know, kind of getting the support that they need to do what they're doing in the city, whether that's, you know, a business or a resident, or, you know, Joe homeowner who is, you know, interacting with us for the first time, that takes a lot of care and effort and energy. But I think we've got the right team in place to do that. We want to identify a path forward for the Stewart Street House, and we'll talk a little bit more about that as well, but that is in our downtown. It's a critical, you know, piece of property that the city owns that could be an example of, you know, where we want to go. And so we want to focus on how we're going to get there with that building. You know, we want to, I've mentioned, create a strategy for the general plan, so I won't revisit that one. But we also have a big project in the Active Transportation Award that the city got. You know, we're working on that with the TCTC, but I think the faster we can deliver, you know, projects of that nature, you know, the quicker we will begin to add elements to the downtown that we are, you know, really craving and strategizing for. And finally, you know, EBT for a farmer's market. We're just getting ready to roll that out now. But all these improvements, all these moving these things forward, just take time and staff. And that is, you know, one of the threats, which is I'm the only full-time staff in the entire Community Development Department. And so how do you, you know?
Yes, but you're the director.
But if you've got no one to direct, you know, it's, then you're just telling yourself what you need to get done. So I think as we look at, you know, some of these opportunities to hire part-time positions or move, you know, some of our contracted staff from one to two days, or you'll see, you know, the potential to, you know, hire on some full-time staff. I think that's huge. I think that'll help us, you know, deliver on some of these strategic goals and on the budget that we've got outlined. You know, the Community Development Department, in a lot of ways, is the face of Sonora to the community. You know, folks are obviously dealing with admin a lot, but are up and down the stairs all day long, and so we want that to be a positive experience. We want folks to, you know, go out and tell others, like, oh, no, working with the city, you know, is positive, and it's not all about all the things we need, but the things that we can accomplish together by working with our citizens. Huge opportunity, I think, with measure Y getting passed to really deliver on some things that the community will see, and we've proposed a few of those things that are visual. And, you know, you may or may not see, you know, a street that gets, you know, redone here or there or some other improvements, but I think it is important that we can visualize, you know, sometimes what our tax dollars are yielding. So speaking of visualization, just a series of photos here to work through quickly. But, you know, we are a compact, you know, urban scene, and we do have some challenges. And that does include, you know, like, where do you put some things? And if we put things like our trash in the spaces where people are trying to move, or trying to. to move, or trying to do business, they're trying to, you know, enhance, it makes it hard to get to that other space, you know? And this is a, this is a, you know, an image of farmer's market, obviously. But the way that we decide to use our city streets and our city spaces will have a massive impact on how many people come into those spaces and what they want to do there. Community Development, you know, in this upcoming year, wants to create more spaces like the one on my right, you know, where people are enjoying those spaces and dedicate less, less space or get more creative around what we do with this, with the things that we, you know, need to deal with. We have people that are bursting at the seams to invest in this town. And we see it all over, and we see it all the time. But here's just a couple examples. You know, the Clampers just recently came in for a permit because they, you know, wanted to, you know, add this beautiful testament to the Bradford Building, you know, which they did downtown a few weeks ago. And they, you know, they take care of everything. They pulled the permits. They, you know, got all of this done and accomplishing it. I think enhances our city in really meaningful ways that people not only see beautiful things to look at, but they get some of the, the history behind that. We're starting to see, you know, art develop in the downtown, which is great. And then we've got some projects, you know, we've got some areas where we are, you know, woefully in need of taking some next steps. And so in the budget this year, this is a top priority for me because, you know, we know, and we've talked a bit about housing today, and this is substandard housing right here. And so, but we can build something here. We can recreate this into, you know, a flagship space that says, you know, the city of Sonora, you know, gets, is, is building its own future right before your very eyes. So this is a huge opportunity for us. You know, projects, when projects come to us, you know, we want to find a way to say yes, if it's the right fit, if it's the right type of use. Now, this is just a project that I saw in a community that I loved. But, you know, it, I think represents opportunity, represents, you know, kind of tomorrow, and, you know, where we want to get to, which is to protect our past and know our history, thanks to Eclamps Vitus and others, but to also think about, you know, what will define the next generation. You know, this is a, this is a very cool city. We are a regional hub. You know, we're attracting young people here, coming back to this area, finding this area. You know, thanks to the Chamber, we are putting on lots of really cool events. So I think we're, we're getting, you know, much, much closer, you know, every day to, to where we want to be. But it just will take us being very intentional with the, the limited dollars that we do have, to create these spaces that people want to be in because that, you know, creates a cycle of, you know, support for things like, you know, Measure Y next time around. Lineburg, you know, we talked a little bit about this, and we're part of the way there. We've gotten part of the way, but we can't stop now because it's kind of ground zero. It's a big part of, you know, what we've seen people respond to very, very positively. We know that a good part of the year, people want to be outside, and you can be outside here. But we need, you know, the shade sales. We need, you know, the, the rest of the spaces to come together to be right. Because when you're, you're sitting there and you're on the street, you know that you're on the street. And so it's good, but it's doesn't quite, you're not quite there yet. So we want to get there with those types of spaces. You know, we realize we can't do it all alone. We can't do it by ourself. So Community Development will be, you know, partnering with community groups and, and agencies and other resources out there to do some of the things that, you know, we can't get to otherwise. And so we thank our partners for, you know, the energy that they want to bring to making a contribution to this community. And we got to ask for what we need. So, you know, when projects come in, you know, if staff have the time to dig into these and ask for what we need and want, then we get a more beautiful tomorrow. We preserve our oak trees. We get creative about how we integrate, you know, new development with our existing landscape. And, you know, in the end, it's, it's a real win. But, you know, when staff are overworked and, and are just trying to keep things moving, then it can be tougher to, you know, really dig into what we need and want. And we've got well-used spaces, ones like the park here, that, you know, we're actively working towards. We've got the pickleball court going in. But we also want to be, you know, gathering more of those dollars to be able to deliver projects like this one. All right. So in conclusion, you know, kind of getting the Community Development Department to the finish line will require some investments. And we've put together a budget that we believe will allow us to successfully do that. I will identify a couple of our supplemental requests here. I mentioned Dragon Gulch. You know, we've had a lot of groups that have come to us and said, we'd love to help you expand that trail. And I think we can do that. We've seen it work successfully in the past. But the city, you know, has to have some skin in the game. And so we've got a recommendation here to keep that type of activity going. Lineburg Buildout and Public Art, I know that's not recommended for funding, but I really would love for the council to keep this one close to your heart and, and know that these investments in the downtown, in our community, are the ones that people see and remember. They don't always remember the pothole that got filled. That's important, too. And we got, I'm not saying to take away from that budget, but what I'm saying is, so much of life is what did you experience? And if that experience includes, you know, responding to a survey to the tune of 1,200 respondents saying, we love this space. We want more spaces like this. Then I see this as a very good investment into the future. Economic development, we talked about that, and that's recommended for funding. And, you know, one kind of subcategory of that would be some of this business incentive planning. And we will, you know, bring a package back to you to discuss what all that looks like. But that concludes Community Development's vision of this upcoming year and some of our requests. And thank you for considering those.
So if the council doesn't mind keeping track of those not recommended funding recommendations, because you will have an opportunity to go through our supplemental request, and those will be among those priorities. There is a small balance left in that supplemental request that you'll get to allocate as well. So keep track of those if there's any that you want to bring back for discussion.
Thank you. Okay. Next up is Public Works.
So, and I think we're doing this Public Works and Engineering. It will be maintenance and your CIP collectively.
All right. Thank you. My name is Mike Pugh. I'm with Dewberry Engineers. And so I was going to go over the Public Works Department. Multiple clicks. Okay. So the Public Works Department, it runs under the City Administrator, Melissa Ead. It includes the City Engineer, which is the Dewberry team, includes myself, Mike Pugh, and then Harley that was up here earlier. And also, on the, on the maintenance side, we have Mike. I always have to read his name because I'm having a hard time pronouncing it. But Mike, Lago Masarino? Is that right?
Yes.
Who does all the, the maintenance work. And, you know, I've been working with Mike for the last, we've only been on board since January, so last, just a little under six months. And I'm amazed at what Mike and his, he's got a pretty short staff, what they can get done. And so some of the things that they've been working on this past year. So all the things they do is the street and sidewalk maintenance. They patch those potholes that Tyler doesn't like talking about, but they're out there, so they're out there passing them. They've been doing a lot of storm drain cleaning, repair and maintenance over the last couple of years. We've had some pretty big storm events come through here. Vegetation removal. And they also take care of picking up piles of debris that are on the road that could become hazards to the traveling public. Okay. So some of the accomplishments we've taken care of this year is, we hired, you guys hired a new city engineer. We've been on board. And one of the things that we did right off the bat is we responded to that derailment of Sierra Railroad. I think that was my second week on the job. So we got through that. We're still negotiating, trying to get some things finished. They're going to come back this summer and replace the agri crossing on Washington and also at Hospital Road, with Washington coming first, I think, in July. And then Hospital Road's going to be towards the end of August, early September. We've been doing road maintenance projects. We've completed some. We've done some, some regrading and potholing on Leonard Edition and Shankville Road, and some drainage improvements along Bradford and Washington Street. And Mike, Mike's group's been great with that. They've gone out there and done some things because a lot of these maintenance things, you kind of, kind of guess what needs to be done to get fixed or just temporarily repaired. And they've gone out there and done flooding on the road just to make sure that what we've done is going to work. And we've been pretty successful. So I better just use this. So the other thing we've done is we've got a new online program through IWorks. Tyler had mentioned the Community Development Department, but we're also doing Public Works. And what this thing is going to do is going to be an online system that's going to allow us to more accurately track the city's infrastructure, what needs to be maintained, what's in bad condition, things like that. It's also going to have a portal for the public to be able to report potholes, report downed trees, report things that they see in the city that needs attention from Public Works. We've also worked on getting an approved overhead rate for the city on federally funded projects. So not only now, for any federal projects such as maybe the Gold Rush Trail that we're working on right now. When the staff charges their time, not only can we charge the straight time, but another 10% overhead, which helps pay for some of the overhead costs that the city has. We've also developed a capital improvement plan, which is going to be instrumental for the next five years to kind of figure out what needs to be done, when and how we're going to get it done. And we've applied for, applied for some grants, including car production program, Safe Streets for All. And just today, we submitted the Active Transportation Program grant for the Lineburg projects or the Sonora Moves projects downtown. Thanks to Harley's group, they got it in on time. So we're good. And on the fieldwork side, I could, you know, we could read this stuff forever, but they, the Mike's group's done all kinds of stuff, including vegetation removal, street sign replacement. We had a collapsed culvert on East Oak Side, which was causing flooding in a personal, private backyard. And so we've gone through that and got that replaced. Unfortunately, we've been chasing the flooding issue down. And now we're looking on hopefully and to try to do some improvements there. But we're, we're getting there. They've done a bunch of storm drain cleanouts and dishes. And one of the big things that we did is we implemented the Red curb program downtown, which eliminated parking spaces right up against crosswalks to make it more safe for pedestrians to cross the street, more visual, it's more sight, sight distance. So you could, the pedestrians can see the truck, the cars coming through. So some of our goals for next year. So we've got a few. So one of the things I missed, I kind of messed up all these slides. One of the other things that we've done on the capital project side is we've gone out the last five months and gone through and identified some of the city's more deteriorated infrastructure, including Snell Road, the Lineburg Retainable Hall, the Storm Main Drain, Hospital Road, and those are the ones. And so we've come up with a plan on, you know, we've, we've determined how much it's going to cost to get these things repaired, come up with a budget, and then come up with a plan of how we're going to get these things done. And so they're listed here. The first one is Snell Street. We actually have started the design work. Our surveyors were out there last week. We've sent out all the utility coordination letters to see who has infrastructure out there, including PG and E, TUD, and AT&amp;T. We're looking to get the, the design completed in fiscal year 24, 25, and get it ready for construction in hopes of, be able to identify some construction funding in 25, 26. One of the things we're using to try to assist this is we applied for the carbon reduction grant to pay for part of the Snell sidewalk in that area. Storm Main Drain, we want to next year, this coming year, advance the design. We've gone through and looked at different grant mechanisms to try to pay for the construction of this thing. And most of the ones that we're looking at are for construction, only not for design. So if we get this thing closer to the zone, or closer to being ready for construction, it's going to look better, it's going to compete better on grants to pay for the construction. Lineburg Retainable, same kind of thing. You're more apt to get a grant for the construction and actual design. So we want to advance the design for that retainable as well. That's going to be.
Just for the record.
It's going to be.
Which one? The, the Lineburg?
Yeah, no stone unturned on that. But that one, I think, honestly, I'm a little less optimistic about the availability of grant funds for that.
Yeah. Okay. So the other goal, I've already said this, we applied for the ATP grant for the Vision Sonora project, the Sonora Moves project. One of the things that kind of fell out of our lap and we took it is there's excess LTF funds from TCTC. So we're going to use that to do the farmer's market sidewalk repairs. So we should be able to get that done next year or this coming year. And Hospital Repaving, we're in conversations with Sierra Railroad.
When you say this coming year, that means like this summer?
Well.
Or the next, this fiscal year, which means actually building a new cement next year?
If we can, if we might be able to get it done.
Okay. Nice to know what we can actually tell people to be optimistic about. Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's a, it's a pretty simple project. It's not a huge design effort. So, yeah. And then Hospital Road Repaving, we're in conversations with Sierra Railroad to see if we can tag on to their project to redo the agri crossing to actually repay a part of Hospital Road because it's, it's pretty beat up. And we're thinking about the approach there is we're going to give them a, a centerline alignment along the street with what we want done and what sections. Have them give that to their contractor and do an alternate bid item, see what kind of a price we get. If they like the price, we'll try to move forward. If we don't like the price, we'll say thank you very much and we'll do something else. Okay. So as far as maintenance projects goes next year, one of the things we're going to really want to start trying to do is to establish an annual restriping program. We've got a couple of streets identified this year. I think Washington is the first one. We also have that slope stability issue at Church Street that we're going to address. We also have that slope stability issue at Church Street that we're gonna address. Got the Elk Drive storm drain, Hope Lane, this is the one I was talking about earlier. We've chased this drainage problem down to Hope Lane and there appears to be a blockage inside the pipe. I looked at the asphalt, you've got, I don't know how this happened, but you got an 18 inch pipe going into a 15, going into a 12, back to an 18. And it seems to be plugged in there somewhere in those steps. So we're gonna try this year to unplug it. If we can't unplug it, then we've got a contingency plan to replace that section of pipe out the following year. And then, so then we also gonna be looking at converting the streetlights to LED to save some energy. And we're looking to try to repaint the streetlights that are down at the transit center. That's giving a lot of people grief from galvanized, just painted black to kind of appease, you know, make it look a little bit better until we can come up with a more permanent solution.
So I just wanna thank Mike and his team for making that an option, because it wasn't made an option with the previous contractors that we were working with. And then also, I think, just to go back to the list on the restriping and the identification of Washington versus Mono. You probably get a lot of complaints about the striping on Mono. We recognize that. That would be the second priority. But I think that we are looking for alternative funding for that location, which is why we prioritize Washington as that location to start with.
And then one of the other things we're gonna look at too, because like I said, you know, Mike's group is pretty small and there's a lot of things going on and they have a hard time keeping up with stuff. So one of the things we want to do is establish pre-qualified contractors to do things like striping, to do things like vegetation removal, potholly, repaving sections of streets. So we don't have to go out to a formal bid every time, small sections. So we're doing that. We're gonna do a pavement condition survey. That's actually gonna happen next week through the I-Work program that I talked about earlier. They're sending out their vehicles starting Monday and they're gonna drive through the entire city, picking up locations of street signs and the condition of the pavement. So by end of next month, we should know exactly what the condition of the roads are out here and where the street signs are and what needs to be fixed. Gonna continue to go after grant funding. We'll go with capital improvement projects and maintenance projects. And continue potholing, if Tyler likes. And maintain, we also have a budget in there to maintain the traffic signals and the battery backup systems. And then as far as Mike's group, they're gonna continue to do what they've been doing, but they have some other, you know, specific things they wanna do is they wanna rehabilitate the historic water trough. They wanna rebuild Santa's House deck and ramp, which is important in Christmas time. See the bricks of the opera house. And they're looking to replace several of their public works, fleet vehicles.
So maybe what we do, Mike, is just if you wanna talk about what's not recommended for funding. And then everything else we write down, if it's recommended for funding. I don't know if there's any questions about those projects, I'm free to ask, but maybe in the interest of time.
Yeah.
Just go over the things we didn't recommend.
Okay.
So they're, they're really, I know. Yeah, smaller items, the painting rig, changeable message boards needed, but we have alternatives we might be able to utilize. Others not recommended.
Striping on Mono Way.
Changeable message.
The striping on Mono Way, that was still in need, though not recommended. So as you guys get to that space and the supplemental request, you know the concerns of the community, you hear them over other things. That could be one that you prioritize under another critical area. And then if we get into the CIP.
I'm sorry, you just said striping for Mono Way was not recommended and we were just saying it was recommended.
It was another one, Washington Street.
Cycle.
Yeah, so we, we have two priorities. We recommended one over the other.
And the other one has a higher grant probability.
I believe that was our thought process, yes. So then on the CIP, number of the not recommended projects, obviously our parking lot maintenance needs are high. So you could see those. We recommended moving forward with the repair of the newly acquired lot. You may want to, as we're doing the sidewalk for Farmers Market, may decide that maintaining that parking lot, identifying some of that funding should be more important than something else we have on the list.
I have a quick question about that Farmers Market sidewalk.
Yes.
Isn't that adjoining the land and structure engineering? Do they have responsibility to help with that?
We plan to collaborate with them, but you are absolutely correct. But we do plan to work with them on that.
Yeah.
They utilize it, I think, as a driveway.
Right.
The city very much utilizes it as a sidewalk.
Their portion of the most beat up sidewalk is their driveway, yeah.
Another critical area that we've got that council needs to be, is the North Stewart Street retaining wall. So that's not recommended for funding, but that is also a very critical path project that you should have on your radar.
And the other thing I was gonna say, the two, the city, we wanna start our city road repaving annual, you know, an annual program and also a ceiling, slurring in the ceiling annual program. But this one, this next year, we've already got Snell Street and we're trying to repave Hospital Roads. We figured, okay, we'll hit those first and then start those programs next year.
And just for clarification, the North Stewart retaining wall, is that the wall in front of the fire department?
No.
No.
No, it's the one.
Oh, yeah, North Stewart, yeah, I know exactly. Yep, nevermind. Sorry, because that's just with the flash storm that washed out, I believe that is.
And what is the responsibility of the properties above that? There's apartment buildings and stuff above that retaining wall, on the street above?
Yeah, they have balconies up there.
Yeah, so and does that, do those property owners have any responsibility for the retaining wall? No, or that's just?
The retaining wall's a city wall.
Okay.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yes.
That was it.
And it's in bad shape.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Questions for Mike?
And I think the idea for me, when we look at the five-year CIP and the progression of priorities. So right now, while we're recommending that we get that consultant database for our public works priorities on maintenance, whether it's the fuel reduction and vegetation management or the creek clearing, those short-term priorities. Then you can see, the reason that we wanna have contractors is to be able to turn them on and off, maybe a shift. Once we get ahead of that, then we start shifting, making these annual allocations to the annual repaving and bigger allocations to actual infrastructure projects. So with that and contracting, we can turn them off and on throughout the budget cycles as we need to. Because we need them all.
Okay, next up is Chief Newt Far.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, members of the public.
Administrator Eads, just a second. So as, some of us have some sandwiches or some time. And for those of us who ate at 11:30, it's been a long time.
Yes, please.
So maybe we could take, you only need five minutes?
No, I said, what, you can take a five-minute break?
You'll, you'll give us five minutes, okay. I think that a short recess of 10 minutes or so would be probably much appreciated by not only the council, but the public. Let's figure on being back.
And the recess as soon as is good now that we're online chief.
See now I get you guys up to sleep.
You are perfect.
Got your bellies full and you're gonna be tired now so I gotta wake you back up.
Yeah, I'm sure you will manage your testing the waking people in the middle of the night.
Yes, this is true. All right, so for the fire department. Do I have to push it twice to make it bigger? Does it automatically does it? Okay. So for our revenues for the fire department, we have charges for service which are around $31,000. Intergovernmental revenues for grants, we usually keep a an amount of a thousand there. That's just a placeholder. Obviously, we've been very successful with grants for numerous years and I'm hoping to continue that as well moving into the next budget year. Miscellaneous revenues of 200, so the revenues coming in for the fire department are 32,200. Transfers in from I believe those are measure I is 625,000. That was passed back in 2004, right? 2004? Yes, thank you. Sorry, I'm trying to get that. It was before I was here. And then in combination for a total of 657,200. On our expenditure salaries are 931,000. Other benefits are 741,000. I'm pretty sure that's our PERS and work comp, liability, insurance and everything that goes along with our employees. Operating expenditures, supplies, we have about 55,000, services 121, utilities just under 50,000. So our total operating expenses are 224 for total operating of just under 1.9 million. Transfers out, I'll have to refer to Chris on the 5,000. I'm not exactly sure what those go to for the transfers. Self insured dental. I figured it was medical. So our mission statement, we actually changed our mission statement. I met and conferred with our our group and we are working on changing our mission statement. And this is what we came up with was to protect the quality of life for present and future generations through interactive interaction with our community, compassionate service and an atmosphere that encourages innovation and professionalism. Our department is a small fire department, but we get a lot done with seven full-time people. So it's myself, a part-time office assistant. We have three captains, one on each shift, three engineers, one on each shift. And then we supplement with interns and volunteers when available and staffed. So like currently, right now, we have one intern firefighter and we have four volunteers. And the reason for that, and I'm proud to say, is three of our interns just got picked up with full-time positions throughout the state. So you know, it's our our program is a success, so. Sonora Fire Department is under the direction of the chief, supported by again one-time part-time administrative assistant. And for those of you who have met Lisa Hoffman, I will give a shout out to her. She is way more qualified to be running a department than to be an assistant of a department and helps me tremendously every day. Our fire department operates 24/7, 365 days a week. Our full-time staff is supplemented, as I said, with intern volunteers and firefighters. And we do have part-time relief engineers that work for other agencies that started their career here in Sonora and feel such a loyalty and a dedication that they give back by staying on as relief engineers. The staff is responsible for the development, coordination and implementation of our department programs and services. And that is a picture of our new type three on the one side, structured fire that our crews responded to and were first on scene and then our training derailment that we had earlier this year. So we're definitely all hazard, all risk. So in 2023, our total responses for the year were just under 1,800. Automatic aid that we provide throughout the county outside of the city limits is approximately about 32% of our calls. And then I broke down the number of calls in the areas for the Columbia area standard going up the hill and then Jamestown going down the hill. Our community risk reduction for prevention, we complete 300 to 350 defensible space inspections every year. We currently have two FireWise communities. I'm hoping to grow that this year through public education programs. And then we also do two green waste events, one in the spring and one in the fall each year to help with cutting down the cost and we partner with Waste Management to do that. On our fire and life safety inspections, we complete about 150 business inspections each year, 59 apartment inspections. And then we send out self-inspections to all the businesses in between years that we don't go out and do an onsite inspection. With the limited staffing, we're only able to go out once every three years to do an onsite inspection. So in between, we send out a self-inspection. We also try to include any updates from the State Fire Marshal's Office. If they're going to have a new mandate or new code requirements, we try to update that to the business owner so they have a heads up before they go into effect. Last year, we did 69 burn permits, 36 hazard operational permits and then multiple different plan reviews and construction projects with our as inspectors with the community development department as well. On training, we have to do our annual firefighter mandated state and federal requirements. And then we also do public education with schools and senior programs. I just recently went to the area for for Area 12, Agency 12 on aging. I just went to that program that they just had this last week. We are working with Red Cross. We have scheduled a smoke detector installation coming up in October in the fall after fire season hopefully is over so that we could help out any low-income areas that don't have smoke detectors and protect the public as much as possible. Red Cross has been a great partner for that throughout the county for years. And then we try to attend public fairs as much as possible. So our accomplishments for last year, we had, we were able to be awarded the AFG regionally with five other fire districts in the in the county. The grant total was just under $800,000, so we have now brand-new SEBAs that we'll be putting into service here in the next couple of weeks. We were successful in the rule capacity grant for new structure and wildland equipment. And then with the help of the city administrator Rochelle before she left and Tyler continuing the CDBG grant funding for the new type three and type six exhaust systems and miscellaneous equipment for for the engines. We are hoping to do the the final push-in and have an open house around the first part of August. So I'll get that date out to everyone for the new engines, put them in service.
You will invite the current council members to, I hope.
Everyone's invited. It's open to the public, so I'm hoping to do a pancake breakfast and and showcase the the new equipment that's going to be serving the the community. We also this year applied for California Fire Foundation grant for a Lucas device that does automatic chest compressions. So City of Sonora sometime, we're we're pretty close out of all of the fire agencies to the hospital. But there are times when since we don't transport, we're waiting for an ambulance. If the if the community is extremely busy that we might have to do something for an extended period of time. Lucas device is amazing. They gets placed on the patient's chest and will do the chest compressions so that you're not wearing out the firefighters and rotating through. If you if you've unfortunately had to do CPR, it can be extremely physical. And this is a better way to deliver positive, consistent depth of compressions when needed. So we're waiting the results of that award. For FEMA and CAL OES, we're still participating in the recovery for both the Washington fire. Tyler and Matt, or excuse me, Mike Lager-Massino, see, now you got me messing up his name too. We're working on the storage building that is in the engineer phasing and should be going out to bid if it hasn't already to be placed at Public Works and that was as a result of the Washington fire when we lost the storage facilities down there during during that tragedy. to be placed at Public Works and that was as a result of the Washington Fire when we lost the storage facilities down there during, during that tragedy. And January and March storms that we had of twenty twenty three, we're still in the recovery process. So I've been working diligently with Cal OES and FEMA, filing all the paperwork and the recoveries to get as much back to the city as we, as we can. So that's been a, a tireless process to go through. We were able to hire our fire captain position with Captain Rhodes retiring this last year. So that was successful and now we're in the process of hiring the engineer since our captain was promoted within. We were able to, our IT person, Mr. Rick Small, is very generous and helped us upgrade some of our IT equipment. And so we're, we're still ongoing, but we're getting, we're getting there. We don't have Windows seven anymore, so that's exciting, which we had up until about a month and a half ago. So every year, we host a biannual career day for Columbia College for our future firefighters. And that's an extremely fun event, I love that. And then we participate in as many community events as we possibly can. This, you know, past year, we had the hundred and sixty third annual firefighter ball. Area twelve, human trafficking training is coming up, actually in conjunction with Chicken Ranch. Motherload Roundup Christmas Parade, Sonora Homecoming, every fifteen minutes, we just completed this year with Sonora High School. Town halls, extinguisher training and strike team leader training, we actually host that in the county as well as part of our region for Cal OES. On our committees and commissions, we participate in traffic commission, the community wildfire preparedness plan development, fire safety advisory committee, safety committee, local hazard mitigation, emergency operation, I'm sure there's more. Because there's lots of committees, but the work's extremely important as we see it. Not only helps us to be prepared and have our constituents prepared, but it also allows us the opportunity for grant funding. I just submitted in the city's application for the community reduction, risk reduction list that you have to apply for every two years. And so they're pushing that forward and, and we're waiting for results to see if we're successful again this year. On, if, if most of you don't know, the way our OES system works, we have the, the individual department level, our county level, and then we have a region and state level. So I do participate as the first alternate for the aerial operational coordinator for the region. So the twelve counties that are in region four, there's three of us that act as the coordinators. And when fires are going on like we have right now down in Copperopolis, we're calling in resources from all other counties, different agencies. And so I participate in that as the alternate coordinator. I'm also the operational area coordinator for Topeka County. And so anytime there's requests that come through, there's three of us here locally that, that also trade off in those positions. I'm the secretary treasurer of the Topeka County Fire Chiefs Association. So we, we try to work collaboratively with our other agencies as much as possible. And then I'm also sitting on the board for the Homeland Security Grant for the city as well with my partner, Mr. Police Chief over here. So we just had a meeting today. So professional skills and development management training. All of our personnel go through an immense amount of hands on training, but they also need to have the skills to be able to manage and supervise not only the incidents but personnel. So we encourage that with our budget every year. We do outreach videos and I'm ready to do another one with our chamber. But the last couple of years, we've been successful in doing some outreach videos for safety, showcasing some of the equipment that we've received on grants and we'll continue to do that. We initiated the standard operating procedure, again, now in the meet and confer process with our bargaining unit. And then we respond as part of the master mutual aid. We've been successful in the, in the past few years with the floods and for any high fire dangers areas to be able to do prepositioned strike teams that the state has allowed funding for. And we'll continue to do that when we have staffing to participate. And then, how do you back up, Chris? The small, so and then I had to put this picture in too because we did a team building with our management group. And so we all went to the escape room and got out of jail, worked together as a team and got out of jail. So we solved, we were excited about that, so. So for the goals, obviously with fire prevention and trying to have public education, this is a, a major concern for our community. We, we did lose our fire inspector position a few years back and so that is a high priority. We've been working collaboratively with administration and the community development department to try to combine that. And you'll see that, I think, later on in the budget to at least help and assist with that. I have put on, put in for grants for inspectors as well to assist with getting more defensible space inspections done in a year and help educate the public on what they can do to keep themselves safe and be prepared. Collaborate with local agencies to support growth and increase efficiencies in our fire services like a JPA, shared equipment, shared personnel. Still looking into all those options. Develop fire safe preparedness and safety ordinances as needed and necessary. Collaborate with PD on the homeless task works, task force project. Encourage professional development workshop attendance of all of our employees. Analyze the desire and feasibility of annexation to unincorporated areas of the county. You know, the growth is what we need to be sustainable and provide better services to our constituents and the sphere of influence around us as well. Continue to collaborate with Chicken Ranch Rancheria for our fire protection reimbursement agreement. The station is, is looking really good down there. If you haven't driven by, I know the casino takes all the thunder, but down on Nelson Road, they're in the process of building the fire station. It's, it's really coming along well. Their type one fire engine that the tribe has purchased should be done at the end of next month in July. So everything is moving forward. I'd like to implement the cloud based inspection program for all of our fire inspections. We're still doing triplicate form and so that would definitely make us more efficient, be able to get direct contact and emails and invoices going directly to people instead of having to process that. So that would make things a lot smoother, a transaction for everyone if I can get that done. Complete the CDBG grant funding for the type six, type three new SCBA's as mentioned earlier as well. So we had started the, the process, so I want to complete that for the meet and confer on the standards of operating procedures. Really trying to work with our local fire chiefs through the Fire Chiefs Association to have collaborative standard of operating procedures throughout the county so that they're all the same and we're not all doing something different. Prioritize and complete and identify the capital improvement projects as we have seen tonight in part of the program. Fleet, fleet replacement schedule for our staff vehicles. Analyze ALS, emergency response programs. That's one area that our fire department could grow by providing advanced life support. Right now, we have EMTs that provide basic life support. So that would be taking that next step and seeing if the community would, would support a program like that. There's several ideas I have and so throughout the next year or so, we'll be going hopefully over those and bringing things forward to the council for their consideration. Test and hire for the vacant fire engineer position. Last Thursday, we just tested for engineer and I'll be completing the chief interviews this week and hopefully have a recommendation by the end of next week. Research and apply for the hazardous fuel reduction grants. Work with Public Works to identify and manage fuel reduction projects. Mike and I have some dates planned together to go around and find the high priority areas, work with city administration, PG&E and see if we can find grant opportunities to do some mitigation on the fuel reduction. I know there was a member of the community saying that they don't see people out doing that. We, city administration took a big chunk out of Lyons, which, you know, had some mixed emotions, but that's what we need things to look like around here, especially on egress, to get people out and to get the emergency personnel in. So we'll be looking for those opportunities throughout this next year as well. And then community outreach for the fire wise communities. So our challenges, again, we don't have a full time fire or building inspector. And so we're hoping to, to put that into this year's budget as a combined position. Six full time firefighters, three O staffing is what it's referred to, is to have three personnel on a fire engine is a minimum is what the NFPA, National Fire Protection Agency standard is, is to have at least three people. Four is even better, just because you're not allowed to actually go into a burning building unless there's a known rescue without having, with two firefighters unless you have two outside ready to go. And so I did apply for the safer grant again this year for six full time firefighters and there's no cost to the city if we are awarded that. So hopefully, keep our fingers crossed we are. Increase the admin assistant to full time, right now it's three days a week. And then full time information and technology specialist for the city as a whole. Everyone kind of piecemeals that together and we don't have a lot of the technology talking to each other. So it'd be really good to have programs that communicate within the departments. General plan development for annexation and growth, I would be participating, the department will be participating in that. Legislative regulations and requirements, state and federal unfunded mandates, trying to find ways that we can either obtain revenue or grant funding to support the mandates that they've, they've brought across the county and the city. The Board of Forestry Defensible and Wild Urban Land Interface Regulations, that's a state requirement. Our ordinance actually goes a little bit further, but it's still something that's unfunded, something we have to do even if we don't do a more restrictive ordinance. The real estate transactions now in the state of California in the high wildfire areas. Any home that is sold has to have a defensible space inspection completed. And so we're now participating in, in that program as well. And then state required inspection reporting, so the mandated inspections that the state requires that we report out on every year. For capital projects, the fire station is, was built in nineteen ninety six, still has the same exterior paint, same roof, garage doors and parking lots, so it needs a little bit of updating. And so I've prioritized those in the CIP as well. The fire museum, exterior paint, building repair and roof replacement as well. That one, I don't know the exact dates, but I think it's, it was the old seven eleven when I remember. So I don't think the roof's been replaced and they've got buckets and plastic and sheeting and stuff when it rains to, to keep things off of the antiques. So those are definitely some of the challenges. So in our supplemental requests, lease replacement or as discussed with the administration, the possibility of a USDA grant for a new utility vehicle. Ours right now is actually, does not start. So we have to charge it every day and then jump it to get it going and you can't shut it off because it just won't start. So whether putting money, more money into that or getting a new one, it was recommended for funding to replace that. So we're looking into the two options of grant funding or lease. And then analysis of the ALS program for the fire department would be ten thousand dollars to look into putting that entire program together, what the cost would be if we could do some type of an enterprise fund that would fund itself starting off. But to do the initial outreach on that and bring something back to the council. So it would be nice to have advanced life support in the city of Sonora. And to finish our, on our budget, the, you know, there's threatens, every hazard threatness, every year, every day, they're different. I don't think any of us would have thought the storms we had in twenty twenty three for January and March would have been anything in our lifetime. It definitely was a hundred year storm. Same thing with the wildfire danger that we have, next could be earthquakes. There's, you know, with our, our hazard plan that we just completed and, and submitted in, there's something every day. So your department, fire department is here to help and protect and do whatever we can to mitigate those risks and, and respond. So that's us for the fire department.
Evening council, Mr. Mayor. All right, so this is a, a quick overview of the Sonora Police Department's budget revenues and expenditures. I don't think I need to go deep into them unless you have a question about a particular line, I can try to answer them. There's a good chance I might look over at Chris for, for specifics, but I can move on unless there's a question on this one. All right. So, I'm sorry?
I was just saying, out of all the budgets, this is probably the one that we're all the most familiar with seeing we've put the most hours behind adjusting things, so to speak.
Yes, I, I feel there's been a lot of discussion about police department budget and needs and, and especially through our emergency staffing issues that we've had here recently. But, so, quick overview, our mission is pretty simple, deliver policing services to the residents, merchants and visitors of Sonora and to safeguard property and life with compassion, dignity and equality through professionalism, fairness and diligence. We have twenty four point three paid positions authorized and, which is equals fourteen sworn, which includes myself. And our budget is at four point nine million. Our functions are, we have, you know, quite a range, I think, for, for a small agency with, with limited staff. Control, investigations, dispatch records, animal control, training unit, professional standards. That's, you know, that, that has to do with hiring, that has to do with internal affairs investigations and so forth. Vehicle abatement, parking enforcement, property and evidence, homeless outreach. Homeless outreach has become a function within the last few years. Just, just by nature of, of, of how things are, are moving here in Sonora, across the state and really across the country. I think everybody in, in most communities are, are feeling a homeless crisis. And so it's become a, a function of the police department because we're usually the, the first one called when something's out of place in the community. So we've adjusted as we move forward to, to respond to that. Public information, as, as the need for, for more information, transparency and, and fact checking grows, we have become more, we, we are becoming more involved in public information and social media and putting the information out. Over the past few years, it's become more of a, a function, I mean, one of the main functions that we do, that we can't forget about. And then IT, our IT person, you probably know is, is actually a part time dispatcher. Most of those, most of her hours are applied towards IT because the needs grow as, as systems and technology advances, the needs for our agency grows, but we also are responding to years of neglect of maintenance on a lot of our IT systems. So we're trying to catch up to that as well. So lots to do in our IT department and then, of course, we have a volunteer unit. We have adult volunteers and we have junior volunteers. The age separation is twenty one years old. And they have a little bit different functions, but they're all very, very valuable to us. We're trying to grow that and, and we actually are starting to grow that unit here recently with some success. Three and a half square miles, as you all know, residential population is, is not extremely high. However, you know, the twenty five thousand daytime pop that we've estimated in two thousand four is likely considerably higher than that, we've talked about it before. Being the, the business shopping hub, if you will, of three counties at least, we get a lot of, we get a lot of visitors. We get a lot of people coming into Sonora, not to mention tourism and local workforce. Two high schools, two elementary schools, that's including a private school. A regional hospital, which also serves multi counties. Four shopping centers and a couple gaming casinos nearby also increase our calls for service. We're also twenty four seven, we average between seventeen thousand, seven hundred and nineteen thousand, three hundred incidents per year. It's quite a bit when you think of, well, three and a half square miles, it's a lot going on. Up here, we have listed here what they call the major reportable crimes. And neither the crime is reportable to the state and federally reported as well. They call them the major crimes, not including the DUIs on the bottom. Those are something local we threw in as well as the homeless percentage of calls that we respond to just because there's usually questions about that. And when I say reportable crimes, so for instance, you see eleven burglaries on there. Burglaries aren't, we're not mandated to report slash investigate. Burglaries aren't, we're not mandated to report, um, slash investigate those. So generally if there's no leads, uh, no evidence left behind, um, there may not be a, a full investigation, which means it doesn't hit this actual, uh, reportable number to the, to the state and federal, um, agencies. So we listed out, uh, what we, what we had, uh, this budget cycle, uh, for goals, um, and where we felt. So, excuse me. And so, uh, you know, obviously we want to enhance our hiring processes and, and we just, we just mentioned a little bit ago that we've, uh, together as a, as a city, uh, we've come together and, and addressed a lot of the issues, uh, trying to enhance our hiring process, uh, salary increases, hiring bonuses, recruitment strategies. And, uh, one of the things we also did, uh, in the department is implement an employee retention survey, um, which kind of gave me and us as leadership, uh, uh, an idea of, of really what the, the line, the staff is, is, is wanting, why they're leaving, um, why, why they would stay, um, and what it would keep, what it would take to keep them, uh, from leaving. And, uh, so it, it gave us some pretty good ideas on, on how to, um, you know, address the issue uh, from an angle, from a position more than just spontitory, right? Um, strength in employee development. This pretty much means, uh, we, you know, we wanted to improve the, the amount of training that we send our employees to. We recognize that we have, uh, young, uh, staff with a, uh, pretty significantly high turnover rate that we've experienced. That leaves us with, uh, staff with not a whole lot of years under their belt. Uh, so we wanted to improve the, the, uh, amount of training, uh, both internally and, uh, professional training, uh, through post and whatnot. Um, we didn't get to meet that goal. We didn't get to achieve, uh, the level of training we wanted to for our staff simply because we needed to focus on covering the streets. Uh, we're, we're at a staffing crisis. So we did not meet that goal, but we will be carrying it over for this, this next cycle. Um, and explore, uh, police facility options. Uh, we moved into our, our building in nineteen ninety-five. It was supposed to be temporary, um, and we're still there. It's, it's old, it's too small. We've, we've talked about it in, in great depth. Um, it's outdated and so, uh, steps towards, you know, meeting that goal is, uh, become associated with veneer, um, consultants, uh, to help us with, um, you know, identifying our needs and identifying our options and, uh, also help with the lobbying, uh, for state officials potentially, um, uh, even, even more than that. And also scouting, uh, site opportunities for potential locations for facilities. Uh, so forward progress there. Complete public safety, uh, surveillance program. We haven't been able to get to this one. It's one of those priorities that we had to, uh, uh, put down on the list, uh, a little lower, uh, due to staffing crises. Uh, we, we did get, uh, the two cameras installed, but they're not activated. They're just, they're just sitting at this point. We'll continue to work on that through this cycle. And then fill vacant dispatch positions. Um, we had, uh, two full-time vacancies and a, and one part-time vacancy and they were all filled. So I'm, I'm happy to report, uh, that, uh, really the first time in better than, since I've been chief, uh, it, it leaves that, but I'm thinking about ten years since we actually had every, that, all those positions filled. So that's a huge accomplishment and, uh, I thank the entire city and the council for the support on making that happen because, um, it was, it was needed. Uh, building improvements and security. Uh, we have added additional lobby camera. Um, we've undergone, uh, you know, first part of the, the needs assessment to the veneer, veneer, uh, consultants. And we're waiting to hear more on what those, uh, security recommendations will be. And that's about as far as we've been able to, to, to reach in, in this particular goal. But we're still moving forward, uh, uh, into this next cycle on some goals, uh, to that effect. Uh, technology improvements, uh, we've upgraded our mobile data computers, uh, the computers we have in our cars to talk to. Dispatch give us details on our calls. They were all at least ten years old. Some of them were, uh, the windows, I believe we were operating off of Windows ten, um, in those. And they were just to the point where they're not compatible with the systems anymore. Uh, so we have eleven of thirteen of those replaced already. Um, we have fifty percent of our mobile auto video, which is basically a dash cam. Those have been replaced and upgraded and we've completed a, uh, a firewall upgrade to help with, uh, well, defend against, you know, cyber attacks, cybersecurity breaches and such. The private surveillance registration system, which is the partnership with the community to register their private security cameras with us. And that's just letting us know who they have, who hasn't, willing to share information with us. Uh, that was put on hold as well due to staffing challenges and improved radio communications. Um, we finally completed the, uh, repeater project. This was, uh, sixty thousand dollars used out of homeland security money, uh, oh, through OES. And, uh, it took, I think we worked on it for close to three years. Actually, yeah, close to three years and working on it, finally completed it, which, which helps our officers talk to, um, dispatch. Basically, when you're in the Greenlee Basin, when you're, um, uh, in a Walmart area, Staples, Safeway, uh, those lower levels, because our, our radio repeater or frequency is line of sight for the most part. And so the terrain around here didn't allow us to talk on that side of the city very well at all. There's some dead spots, so big officer safety concern, uh, took three years to get it in place. But we are, uh, very happy with the results, it's working and, and we're talking. And just as that happened, we had a major failure in dispatch. As you all know, our dispatch, it, it was, it was one of our goals to, uh, try to identify funding, uh, to, um, upgrade our dispatch console. And, uh, before we got to it, the, um, base unit failed and our old console, uh, equipment was incompatible with anything new. Oh, yeah, 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 okay. I didn't know if I was supposed to speed it up or, okay. Come on now, come on, next slide. Gotcha, circling the drain. I'll talk faster, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, yeah, so it's circling the drain. Uh, so we're, we are working on that. Uh, homeless outreach support team, uh, enhancing that, uh, as it was in his, at the stage, the beginning of, uh, of this, this, this cycle. Uh, we've been able to hire a, uh, a part-time homeless outreach coordinator. We've all met, um, we've finally, uh, formalized the host homeless outreach support team, um, by MOU. It's signed, which is great, it's an accomplishment. And, uh, uh, as of the time of the writing of this slide, uh, over a hundred and sixty interactions by the host team. And I think we're going to hear from, from Chris, uh, not Chris Gorski here, but Chris Neves, um, in the near future, uh, get an update, uh, from him on what those interactions look like. Uh, evaluate, uh, city parking enforcement needs. That was a goal last year. Uh, again, it's something we couldn't get to due to, uh, staffing that we have. But in that process, we've hired a full-time CSO, which we haven't had before. That's going to be, uh, an assignment, uh, for that full-time CSOs to work with the city, um, to, to start identifying those needs in the city, uh, for parking enforcement. Uh, and expand the PIO officer capability. Uh, same answer on that, we didn't quite meet that, but that CSO we've identified is, is someone we want to, um, uh, bring into the PIO piece of it. We found it challenging to have a full-time peace officer, a sworn peace officer as our only PIO. Uh, because when, you know, things happen and they're usually the, you, you know, they're out there on scene and it's very, very hard for, uh, a sworn officer to take a break during an incident and, and, you know, put out public information over, over social media. All right, so moving forward, uh, we want to continue to enhance our recruitment and retention. We're in the process of working with Epic, uh, establishing a brand and getting a recruitment video out there. Um, maximizing our social media opportunities with some guidance from, from the, the Epic folks. And, uh, also some local opportunities, uh, local knowledge, uh, about social media. We've, we've been working with someone there. And then, uh, we, we really, really want to eliminate turnover, reduce it as much as we can. We would love to eliminate it if, if, if at all possible. Um, and, you know, I, I, a, a big part of that is adjusting our culture, uh, to make sure it's in line, uh, properly aligned with, um, you know, our, our goals and the city's goals and expectations. Um, continue to strengthen employee development. Talked about it before, I couldn't, we couldn't quite do it, uh, but we want to, uh, not just achieve a hundred percent post-required CPT level, which we were previously operating at, we want to exceed that. Um, and also reestablish our in-house training opportunities, which means, um, you know, get our, our folks trained, just train the trainers and bring a lot of the training home and, and, uh, share it with our folks. And then in, enhance our leadership, mentorship and, uh, succession planning. Um, we've, we've already started on that. We have some new folks, new faces in our leadership positions and things are going good. But got a lot, a lot of work to do because like I said, they're new faces. Um, and the police facility project, we're going to continue that, moving forward on that, we hope. Uh, and, uh, with, with relying on our veneer consultants, needs assessment and project concept and design hopefully. And, uh, help us, help guide us in responsible use of measure why funds, um, for what is best options for us in the city uh, for, for a, a new and or, um, uh, larger updated police facility. We'll see what that looks like. Um, and explore funding opportunities, uh, you know, outside of that, existing city assets. What do we have, uh, grant opportunities, what else is out there? And, uh, I mentioned before, uh, lobbying for, uh, budget requests. Um, we've, we've been working on our, our, uh, property and evidence upgrade for quite some time. Um, we've got a lot of work to do. Uh, in, in short, we, we outgrew our property and evidence area. And, uh, we had to relocate it into our garage. So there's a lot of security pieces that go along with that. We need cameras, we need locks, uh, better locks. Um, and, uh, we are basically sectioning off an entire piece of our garage, uh, top right picture up there, um, building a wall and, uh, expanding our property and evidence, uh, into the garage there. Of course shelving, uh, canisters, packaging, all that needs to be updated for better tracking. Um, enhance IT security, so we have a little more to do in the server room. Uh, picture's not the biggest, but, uh, uh, bottom left is our server rack, which is pretty vulnerable, especially when we have, uh, AT&amp;T workers and, um, uh, internet workers go into our, our server room and working on their equipment. Our equipment that they manage, um, in, instead of having to post somebody at the door because our, our, our servers are so vulnerable. Um, we're going to secure that up a little better. It looks great, doesn't it? So, uh, that's definitely, you know, so the physical security piece is that. And of course we're going to continue, uh, the, the, you know, the security upgrades for the software as well. Uh, there's some, there's some upgrades needed in there for the backups. I think we're on a Windows seven on one of our backups. Uh, private, uh, this is one I talked about before, partnering with the community. Um, you know, we, we carry this goal over, uh, you know, it's going to enhance our investigative, we speed investigative efforts up a lot. And, uh, you know, maybe a quicker identification of suspects and streamlined investigations. It's somewhat of a force multiplier by bringing the, the community in, helping out with, with, uh, crimes. Uh, improve our, continue to improve our radio communications. Uh, you know, this, this, this goal was already there, but it's become high priority to, uh, complete our, our radio console installation. Uh, we, we've made, you know, you know, we've identified, uh, the end of, um, July as a time where we expect to have, um, everything up and running. A lot of work that goes into that because we have to shut, completely shut down our dispatch center, um, rip out all the equipment and put new equipment in and, uh, somehow continue to operate, right? So we're going to establish a temporary, um, dispatch center out in our, um, parking area uh, with a mobile, mobile unit, working on it, uh, on that. We have a plan and we just got to test it out, hopefully, hopefully it works. Talked about evaluating the residential and parking enforcement needs. We get a lot of complaints about, uh, RVs and boats parked, uh, RVs and boats parked long-term, uh, trailers and so forth. Um, we do have some ordinances to address it, uh, but we, we probably need to look at all the areas and adjust the signage and look at all the options, uh, for enforcement on those. We have narrow roadways. We have, uh, uh, fire lanes that are, are, um, it either can be identified as fire lanes or existing fire lanes that, uh, potentially we, we need to look at remarking. And then review our ordinances and, uh, resources and understand what best practices would be, uh, for our particular city. And I think that's not just going to be police department, it's going to take out the whole city to kind of come together and, uh, and tackle this problem. Uh, because there's a lot of things involved. Code enforcement, fire department, I think have a big piece of it too. And so, uh, that's the goal moving forward. And then, um, expand our PIO, we talked about that already and the need for it. Our full-time CSO is in place, just about done with training. And, uh, we'll be getting him to PIO school here pretty soon. And we hope to be able to push out, uh, public information a little quicker as things evolve, if and when things evolve. And then create and expand an officer wellness program. Uh, we're off to a good start. We have, uh, wha- wellness, officer wellness app, app, uh, on their phone two quarters ago. Officers get to use, it has a bunch of resource on there. We have a pretty good, um, peer support group. We're looking at expanding, um, opportunities, uh, for, for wellness programs. Uh, for instance, a, a, a place to exercise and a, a place to have meetings off-site and, and, and peer support type meetings off-site. So looking into those options. And then, uh, so challenges for us, uh, continue to be, we've, we've suffered some staffing shortages. We've, we've hired some folks, but we're still operational, we're, we're not, um, uh, we still have four positions, uh, for patrol that are not functional in themselves. They're in, you know, two people in training, we have two positions that are unfilled. Um, and then our three dispatch positions that we talked about earlier, they're still in training. So we're still operating with, with, as if we were short-started, uh, staff because we can't fill, um, vacant spots with those bodies yet. That's still a challenge. Um, training, as we said, um, making sure we have, get people to the right training and as much training as we can, uh, while still cover the shift. Um, and, and I, I mentioned longevity and experience plays a big role in, in what our challenges are be, are, are at, excuse me, um, for, um, maintaining good policing in the city. And, uh, obviously the applicant pool, we talked about it before, has a lot of influences on why people are leaving the trade and why people are not coming into the trade or competing with, um, all the other agencies in the state to try to. into the trade. We're competing with all the other agencies in the state to try to get good applicants. And inadequate, we've identified our police facility is, is really inadequate to, to meet the needs of, of the, the, the city, but also to operate out of as a, as a unit. There's always been, there's some legislation that impact our job and from AB 109 to Prop 47. And, and there's, there's more criminals on the street than in prior years. Just because a, a lot of things have been pushed down to, to local level. So the, the local, be it crime level or ability to house, one of the two is creating a situation where there's more lower level criminals on the street, but they're still criminals and they're still committing some crimes and they're, they're not properly supervised. So that's creating some additional calls for us as, as, as an agency. And then, you know, police reform bills, you know, but there's, there's, there's obviously some reasons behind them that, that we, we can all support. But there are some negative impacts, which generally result in staff time to, to keep up with those mandates. It just, it's just additional staff time, which we don't have a lot. So it's somewhat of a challenge for us to navigate those. Homeless crisis, as we all know, we're, we have our piece of it. We do have the highest population of, of, again, homeless in the region. And of course, you know, we are the hub of, of, of the county. So a lot of those services are here close by in the city. So we see a great deal of, of interactions with the homeless community. Opportunities is our Van Air Facility Consultants that we've partnered with for, you know, a new building. And then our recruitment consultants that we're working with for branding, marketing and hiring practices. Staffing enhancers, Chris talked about the Enterprise Fleet Program. A year ago, we talked about how a, a good percentage, probably the, the bigger percentage of our fleet was over 20 years old. None of the Crown Vics are in service right now as, as I speak. So instead of our officers driving 20-year-old vehicles and sometimes pushing them off the roadway is a thing of the past. And we're very pleased to have that. And our officers have tools to do the job that we hire them to do. Hiring bonuses are, are definitely a positive opportunities. Gets us attention, right? It, it, it gets like, it gets people interested. And I think once they get in the, in the seat of a patrol car with our agency, we have an opportunity to sell what we really, you know, our culture and, and the way we do policing and our community gives us a better opportunity to, to, to hire people and recruit people. Dedicated wages and leadership. And I talked about the employee retention survey. Those are the bullets that we kind of walked away with, the areas that we can work on. And special assignments being one of them. There's just not a whole lot of collateral opportunities in a small agency. So we're looking at ways to, to provide those opportunities. Homeless outreach, talked about this, I, I think enough already. But it, it, it's definitely an opportunity because we do have a significant portion of our calls for service are related to the homeless crisis. And community partnerships, we, we definitely see as an opportunity, good working relationships and partnerships with Adventist Health, Health and Human Services from the county, Sonora High School, Chicken Ranch, Sonora Area Foundation, Visitors Bureau, Chamber of Commerce, CNBC and our Topeka County Business Council. We see those as opportunities as well. Which brings us to supplemental requests. So we're hoping we can, we can get an ATV response vehicle. We have, I believe it's 3.1 miles of trail on the Dragoon. And the only way to get up there is by foot or a smaller vehicle. So the, the picture of one of our officers here in the side-by-side Kubota is, is how we get up there sometimes. We, so we, we go over to Public Works, we sign it out and then we drive up to the trail. It's a two-seater. And so if you have to transport somebody back, there's really no safe way to do that in a two-seater. And, and it, it, 3.1 miles, it's, it's a long way to walk. And to put that in perspective, the entire city is three and a half miles. So we need something better to get up to the trail and handle calls for service. We get calls for service. We get animal calls up there. We get medical calls up there. We get homeless calls up there, suspicious circumstances. We've had death calls up there. So we need to be able to get there and we need to have a, a vehicle that can get us there and get us down if we have to transport a patient or a suspect. We also do a lot of camp management, responding out to homeless camps for complaints and/or trespass notices, or you name it. And usually it's out in the woods and it's a distance out in some locations. Andy, I know you've been out to several camps. And so that is a long time away from a patrol vehicle if something urgent kicks off and we got to get back to the patrol vehicle. So having, having something to get us out to work in, in the camps would be very, very helpful as well. Fully, fully equipped, similar to the one on the top right, we preliminarily estimated about $31,000 with the purchase of the side-by-side and the upfitting for it. It would, it would need a radio, it would need a certain emergency equipment, not as much as your regular patrol car, but, but it would need a certain level of upfitting. And then stop sticks for pursuit intervention. Pursuits are dangerous. They're dangerous for the community. They're dangerous for our officers. They're dangerous for, for the, the people, the suspects. And we're always looking for ways to, to safely end pursuits. And we have a busy little town. There's always a lot of pedestrians and, you know, vehicle traffic downtown. And so stop sticks, they've been around for a while. They're not a new concept, but they're getting better and better. And a lot of agencies are, are moving to them as, as an option. That's basically what they do. You throw out the, you throw out the strip, you roll it out in front of the car that another officer might be pursuing. And it, it deploys straw-type tubular-type spikes. So it slowly defates, deflates the tire. So it doesn't burst a tire, doesn't go flat automatically. It slowly defates it with the idea that the, the vehicle ultimately come into a, a stop safely instead of an abrupt stop. So we're, we're also hoping to get 14 of those. So every car can have one because when there's a pursuit, you can't say, wait a minute, I want to run back to the office and get these stop sticks out of the locker. And finally staffing increases. Most, if not all of these, well, most of these align with, with the City Gay Report noted as, as staffing recommendations, additional police officers, full-time records and dispatch supervisor. We don't have a records and dispatch supervisor right now. Administrative assistant to the chief. One full-time dispatch records technician. So basically an additional dispatcher to what we have now. And then change from part-time to full-time, the homeless outreach coordinator. And then we have the, we talked about the side-by-side and the stop six. That completes the, the supplemental requests and the presentation unless there's any question.
If I may, I, I don't mean to get somber for a moment, but I've just got some really troubling reports from the fire over in Calaveras County right now around the, the Copperopolis neighborhood. And I was wondering, Chief, have you heard anything? I'd, I've heard that there's some significant damage. If anyone has loved ones or anyone over there, it might be a good time to check in with them because there's mandatory evacuations happening.
The mandatory evacuation started probably around four o'clock. That's why I contacted the city administrator. It's up to just under 2,000 acres right now is what the reporting. There is a structure fire within the fire right now that they're dealing with. But that's the, the most I've gotten out of the report. They have about 25 strike teams dispatched to the location to set up for tomorrow's crews and to assist for tonight. They had the two V-Lats, which are the large airplanes on that this afternoon as, as well as mini helicopters. So the cool, cool weather starting right now and the winds usually die down in the nighttime a, a little bit should help them gain control of it. So, but absolutely if someone has loved ones in the area, it would, wouldn't be a bad idea to call them just to check in.
Have you heard anything about Old Town Copper? I, I, the last thing I want to do is spread misinformation, but it's really disturbing what I've, I've heard that it's kind of getting out of control.
Yeah, a lot of rumors are going around right now, but directly from Cal Fire Representatives is just under 2,000 acres and there's one confirmed structure fire within the fire right now.
Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
Okay, to, to finish up the presentation, we're looking at the total FTEs that we're budgeting for next year. The column on the very right is 24, 25. There is two additional FTEs. One, there's a couple of part-time. There's a Economic Development Coordinator for the Community Development Department would be a part-time, limited-term position. And then we're looking at adding a building official position for community development. That would reduce the amount that we spend on the contract, contracted employees. So it's basically just a direct trade for them. We're also adding a Assistant Administrator position. That position would, for the budget, replace the Administrative Services Director. And then the last is the Homeless Outreach Coordinator, which is now a part-time position would move to full-time. I believe this slide probably just summarizes that. Assistant Admin, City Administrator. This position would basically replace the Administrative Services Director position. A building official position, again, this would be a, basically a budget trade for contracted staff that we currently have now. And then increase the part-time Homeless Outreach Coordinator to full-time. Currently that is a grant-funded, part-time position. And so to make it full-time, there is a general fund contribution. Economic Development, Development Coordinator position, it's part-time, limited duration. We would hope that this position potentially could look for grants to grant, fund itself into, you know, into the future. And, and then the last is the, the fleet. We know we signed a agreement with Enterprise Fleet Management. We have taken delivery of the first four of the police vehicles. There's an additional six still coming. And then we are also adding to the lease a new dump truck and then a couple of pickups for Public Works. And as we know, everything else was status quo. And, you know, we've shown the budget. It's basically a stack of papers and it's a big PDF, but it's really a web-based budget and there is a direct link listed there. And you can find it on the city's website. And now we're at supplemental requests. Those are all the requests that we've heard about all night.
Can we go back the one or two slides there, please? Yeah, okay, that one. For the Assistant City Administrator, which obviously seems like a really good idea, what will the cost difference be between the Assistant City Administrator and the Administrative Services Director?
Yeah, it's, it's about $26,000.
Okay, so. Thank you.
We've heard about the supplemental request all night. Basically, this is just a big list by department and purpose. The highlighted ones are the ones that the city is recommending at this time. And that's basically page one of that. That's page two. This page also includes maintenance items and the CIP items that we've are recommending. And then I will stop this here because we have a few items to go over before I sort of give you the capstone of the whole presentation. So the other items that we need to deal with are the, they're basically A, number one, which is the creation of the new job descriptions. And it's the, the three job descriptions that I had just mentioned. The descriptions themselves are included. And so that's part of the budget presentation. Part two of that is the new pay scales for the, the tentative agreements that we've reached with the employee unions. And those are the, for the Sonora Management Employee Association and the, the Sonora Confidential Employee Association. Now remember, Sonora PD is already on their new pay scale. Well, those are the three agreements that we reached. Number three was the tentative agreements that were negotiated with the unions. And that includes those three unions that we've mentioned. And that just, those tentative agreements ratifies the economic terms of the agreements. Number four is a fee schedule, which is a new fee schedule that we would like to adopt. And it adds approximately $40,000 in revenue. And then number five is the GAN appropriations limit that we're required to pass each fiscal year. So if there's any that you have questions or want to go over, you know, individually.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff? Yes, okay, well.
Well, I was going to ask for a, a little bit of explanation about GAN. I mean, I read it and it sort of went.
Okay, so in 1979, California voters approved Proposition Four that basically limited spending of tax revenues by cities. Each year, we're required to calculate the limit that the city can spend up to in tax revenue and then compare that to our actual tax revenue. And if you go to page two, there is a calculation. We're allowed to choose basically the California Personal Income Index, which was 3.62% for fiscal 2324. And then we can add that to the, either the county's population change or the city's. And since the city's was actually 0.3% versus a county number that was negative, we use the city number, which is more beneficial. And that equaled a GAN appropriation limit for 2425 of 60, 56,903,000.
So, so we would never reach that.
Yeah. And then if we go back one page, we're at 13 million of that 56.
It's a, it's a sort of automatic.
Yeah, sort of pie in the sky. Okay.
Yes, we wish we would.
A hoop jump in that we do every year.
Yes, thank you.
But we'll approve it with no squawking or much comment. So. No questions?
No, I don't have any questions. Comments after.
Nelson Monroe, is there any public comment? Houseman Merrill, is there any public comment? It's getting kind of thin.
I wonder why.
Yes, there is.
Mayor, just because of the way that these items were presented, it would need to be public comment on items A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay. Yeah, there's A1, A2, A3.
Okay, thank you. So, and I am going to also separate out item number four in the event that people want to go through these or pass them jointly. Actually, I think one as well. But comment on items 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5. Do we need to take those comments separately or can they be joint for the entire package if that's desired for the...
Yeah, they can be joint. You just have to disclose to people in advance if they're commenting on all those items that weren't just one.
Okay, thank you. So...
Now you have me really confused.
So, we are...
And it's 10 minutes to 10:00 PM. So, is this the budget of everything here? I want to talk about the budget.
Okay.
The supplemental list. First off, I want to thank Chief New because she did come to the District Attorney's Elder Safety Conference last week. And I did come by your station and bring back the stuff that you left over, so it didn't get thrown in the trash to try to save some money. I just kind of want to look through this. So...
So, we're going to do like at the end, a review of each item?
So, first, we have to pass the items 1 through 4 or whichever we choose to pass among that group, and then we will be in a position where we can consider the supplemental and what we...
Okay, so we're doing just the numbered ones on all the different changes?
Correct. At this juncture.
Yeah, there's like a capstone presentation.
Okay, see, that's what I wanted to know.
Okay. And afterwards, we will get to the supplemental and deal with it at length, probably at least till midnight.
Well, let's hope not. So...
Yeah, I'm actually in your camp because I still have to get up to 3.
As far as I can tell, 1 through 5 is like already ordained by law or you've negotiated it. So, there's really nothing much to comment on there.
Thank you. So, seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the council. So, any... I do have a question though, I hear. So, moving the Administrative Services position to Assistant Administrator is about 26,000. Then, there's also the position that fills in, backfills in the Administrative Services and budget and all that. Is that, am I... As you go over to one place...
Yeah, there will not be any back though. It'll remain unfunded.
Okay, so that is the total, that is the total cost...
Yes.
...that we're considering. Okay.
Yes.
Good, that's an important point, I think, for this rather stingy council and not parsimonious. So, and then I have a series of questions about just what some of these fees actually end up being. I think that's on page 530. 530 of our some 600-odd pages.
Which one of these packets?
Oh, so it was the copies that were going up 1,000% from 10 cents, which is admittedly pretty cheap, but I just remembered that something had gone up 1,000% and you said, "No, no, no blessed way." But...
Oh, 530, thank you.
So, many of these are self-explanatory in the parking lot fees, et cetera. My gripe with fees is that there are many fees, like the legally... We're not given a choice if we want to make a repair to our house, if it gets inspected or not. That, to me, then becomes a tax, not a fee. It's not where we're asking for a service that we're choosing to pay for. We are compelled by law and the threat of punishment to not pay. Those type of things, I think, should be separated out and put before the voters, not just going through this labyrinth of California law to pretend that it's not subject to popular vote. So, that's just a general position. Which one of these, please, are the ones for inspecting my water heater? Should I get around to actually doing it? There was one that was going from $20 and $30 up to, I think, $120?
Yeah, all occupancy inspections?
That's the occupancy inspection. Is that on the next page?
It's on page... I don't have it...
531.
531, maybe.
Exhibit A.
Yeah, well, there's only two pages, 530 and 531.
Okay, there's an occupancy inspection that is currently $60, and then it just depends on the square feet of the building, going up to $600, but I don't think that affects many homeowners. I'm just waiting for Chris to find that.
Why would you have...
The ones you're discussing are actually fire departments, which aren't related to permitting. So, for community development fees, if someone was coming in to get a permit to put a new hot water heater in, that would be part of the plan and permitting would be part of that inspection. Totality of that cost would be for the building inspector to come out and do that inspection. Same thing, replacing a roof, a deck, anything like that, that the building department would be inspecting. That's part of the plan review cost and the inspection is built into that cost for them to come out and finalize.
And how much is that?
I don't know.
Well, see, and this is...
Because I don't think that's part of this.
That's not changing.
It's not changing on the fees. Yeah.
That's good to know.
Yes.
Then, both Suzanne and I were wondering what the above-ground fuel storage permit, including LPG tanks, are those our home propane tanks?
Yeah, any time that there's propane, whether it's commercial or residential, it has to go through the permitting process and the inspection for the fire department to come out, that's who does the inspection, is not included in that plan review. So, that's the fees that would be associated with the inspection to sign that off.
Is that an annual thing?
No, it's a one-time as it's being installed.
Okay, so that's part of a building permit and not just, "I have propane, I'm going to start getting hit with $120 additional a year."
Not a year, no. It's a one-time. If you're, maybe you're putting propane in because you said be all electric and now you want to install a propane tank, it would be that setting of the propane tank, the inspection of it, making sure the valves and everything are hooked up correctly.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think that clarifies some. And then occupational permits required by California Fire Code. It says 120 annually. That's occupational for...
That's our hazardous operating permits, as required by the state of California. So, there's a one-and-a-half-page list of welding, hot works, storing flammable liquids, anything that's a hazard. But we're allowed to charge up to $120 per hazard that is stored. Right now, the city only charges $120 for any of those items per business that is stored. That's not, that's for a commercial building to operate a business.
Okay, so the acetylene, for example, has to be outside and properly contained and upright and all that?
Right, chained and so it won't fall over.
Okay. And technically, that could be per bottle or per substance?
It's listed as per permit. So, in the Fire Code in Section 105, it has a listing of probably 50 hazardous operational permits that are required in the state of California. And the state allows, an authority having jurisdiction, charge for each one per business. So, if a business, an industrial business has a welder, has a processing plant, has flammable liquids, hazardous materials, you could charge 120 for each one of those or more, depending on your rates that you need to compensate for to pay for themselves. And so, right now, we only charge $120 for any type that's allowed. So, they could have more than one at the facility for one-time fee. Or, excuse me, that's an annual fee, but one cost.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Madam Cruz, were there any others that you had questions about here that...
Oh, no, I think they've pretty much cleared it up. I actually just had a question about pile pickup. Melissa, we had talked about pile pickup before and maybe pushing that into the private sector. Would, I'm not familiar with that. Would a resident call and request as a pile of leaves?
You fill out a form. It's on the website. I have it done and I've got a new request in before July 1.
It is.
It's tripling.
And then we do identify it by ordinance. So, any changes to that program and if we continue or discontinue, we'd have to come back and we'd have to reconsider the ordinance.
Other than the rate.
Right, yeah. So, my recommendation right now would be to increase the fee to recoup the costs and not subsidize that any longer. But I think ultimately, we should, we should ask ourselves if that's going to be a Public Works function or a function of our Waste Management, Green Waste program. Thank you.
So, this fee is really just for if I call for a debris pickup?
Right.
Yeah. So, it's not the, it's not the street pickup that people expect.
And then there's one more. What was the other one that we... Heather, we had two. So, what was the second one? Oh, the leaf pickup. Oh, that, yes, the leaf pickup. We do that for free. Yeah. So, that's the other one, yes. So, we've got to bring them all back. I would recommend that.
Specifically, just with the leaf pickup, I would say that could be a preventative, you know, proactive measure instead of having to clear clogs from city pipes, you know, that, that's one of the things that I could support continuing to do.
That's why it exists.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And what are the... Okay, two other questions here. Burn permit, that burn permits, to walk in or to go in there, fill out the paperwork, get a, I mean, and pay whatever is required. I've never burned, so I don't know what it, or at least not here.
So, currently, it's $20, but we go out and inspect the area at the home.
Oh, okay, that's, that's why, okay.
Yeah, we want to make sure that there's the proper clearances and if they're burning on a slope, they've trenched it and everything's safe for them to burn in the location at their home.
Okay, that seems reasonable in a high-fire-risk area. And then what are we doing with candle and open flame device in assembly occupancy permit?
So, that's usually for special events, like if somebody wanted to have candles for their wedding and at the opera hall, let's just say that they're renting. Usually, there's a candle permit that the city has had. I have not issued one since I've been here. Now, whether people don't know about it and they're having it without a permit, I'm not sure, but there's actually a candle and a, and a container test that you do. It's called a tissue test, but the candle flame, when it's lit, has to be a minimum of four inches below the top of the container so that it doesn't catch any of the combustibles on the table on fire. But that is for any special events or anything within the city. And there's really no way to police that except for let people know when they're having events in public areas or city-owned buildings that it is required if they're going to have open flame.
So, what do we do for churches like St. Patrick's where it is customary to have candles?
Those are actually exempt in the Fire Code.
Okay.
Religious, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So, I appreciate you having answered or, and clarified so many of these things. And many of them are reasonable, but we're not going to stay here till midnight going for, I mean, separating out the ones that seem reasonable and the ones that don't. So, I am going to vote against this because if I had known that we intended to raise all the taxes on our own people instead of just Measure Y, I would have pushed very hard to make that 3/4 of a point. I think that part of the really salient argument for Measure Y plus you was that all of the people coming in, the 25,000 that we host daily, instead of just locals, would be helping to pay for it. And like I say, many of these seem reasonable, but I am too tired and have to get up too early for me to sort it out and it would take till midnight. So, with that...
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to follow suit on, with you, on, what is that, number four?
Yes.
Yeah, number four. I will, I will go with you on that. I just want to make some simple comments about the budget, if I may. This is obviously Mark and I's last budget and it's interesting, when I first got on the city council and I brought it up before in the past, that we were in the red, some overspending had happened and all kinds of other stuff. And as a former, former, former city administrator, kept telling the council at the time that McDonald's coming into the city and Lowe's was going to save the whole, the whole thing, the whole shebang was going to be great. And none of the math added up. And then, of course, we got Tim Miller, who did a lot of great work on our, on our budget and the council, of course, went along. And we kept a pretty status quo and very conservative budget. And I commend the council for all the years that this has happened. But we've got another great budget. A lot of good, hard work went in to our city administration and very thankful to them and the city council for this. So, unfortunately, our two soon-to-be-new council members aren't in the building any longer, but I can't blame them.
They've got reasonable lives.
But, you know, we're passing the torch and I'm very, not only confident in the future of the city, but I'm very confident in the ability of the next council to manage a good budget. So, we've given, I think we've worked hard and I look forward to seeing the city council continue to work hard to make a good conservative budget.
You got me thinking again. And so, my inability to resolve this tonight to my satisfaction does not in any way diminish what I think is an absolutely fantastic job on every other part of the budget. Personally, I pay homage to Chris and then the leadership that Melissa has provided in putting us in the, bringing the ideas that she sold us on and have put us on a new path. And so, I don't want to leave that on a negative note...
It is.
...because this is an incredible budget and we are in incredible position that we couldn't have imagined three years ago, so...
Absolutely. And please know that we are grateful for those compliments and we appreciate it. It's not a negative note because this is your prerogative to do. Just to let the council know that there is a cost associated with that fee schedule, I think $40,000. So, as we walk through the supplemental requests, we had a balance of about $68,000. We will subtract 40 because those costs still have to be covered.
We have yet to vote on it. That may...
I'm just, I'm just letting the council know the impacts of that. So, then that will be the first expense in your Measure Y applications. And so, then you may have to cut something associated with that, that... And so then, you may have to cut something uh, associated with that, that supplemental request. So just letting you know how those decisions are connected.
Yep, I, I certainly have uh, some comments. Just, I, I, I see this as being kind of flawed logic. If the idea is to save the taxpayer money by not increasing these fees, what you're saying is you'd rather have everyone in the city subsidize, continue to subsidize that fee instead of the one person that's applying for the fee. So I don't see the logic in not increasing these rates when many of these are mandated by the state of California. It, it looks like, like we have to have these permits or fees in the budget. So by not increasing them, which we've all established, we're already operating at a loss. By not increasing these fees, what you're asking is you want the entire city, everyone that lives here, to continue to subsidize these programs at a loss instead of passing that cost on to the one individual who is applying for the fee. So I think that's an incredibly flawed uh, train of thought.
And I have been asking staff to find ways to use artificial intelligence, to use Zoom for inspections, et cetera, to have, to send a fireman out. I haven't, I mean, this, I've kept, this doesn't include Amy, uh, because, or Chief New, because I haven't spoken to her about it. But somebody ought to be able to just take a camera zoom uh, showing mineral dirt and all that and it stays at twenty dollars. There should be other options, but like I said, we don't have it till midnight. So I have made a choice. I.
Yeah, I just, I'm just throwing it out there. I know, speaking as a taxpayer, you know, I don't need to have a special event permit. I don't need to have a lot of these. And, but what you're asking me to do is to continue to subsidize them.
No, I'm saying that we don't have.
That's exactly what's, by, by, by voting against this, you are asking the people of Sonora to continue to let these fees operate at a loss to all of us collectively as a city. That's, that's the reality. And as, as uh, city administrator Eads pointed out, we're gonna have to have further cuts so we can either do the business savvy decision and make it, you know, make the individual responsible for the services that they're requesting, whether, whether, you know, they have a choice in it or not, or you're asking the community to continue to subsidize what should be the burden on the individual.
You could view it that way. I view it as we don't have time this evening and I have made my position clear.
That, that's fair.
And, and so have you. So I would be delighted to entertain a motion on the first four of the five. And then we can deal with, no, that's, that's one, two, three, and five.
Mr. Mayor, I, um, I move that we approve uh, the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five proposed operating uh, in capital improvement budgets as presented minus number four.
A second?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, nay.
Uh, I'm kind of at a loss because I wanna support all the other movements. It's just, so.
We're separated out number four where you can.
That's not what the motion was.
Yes, minus number four.
Does that include all the supplemental requests? We were still gonna review the.
I, I'm just confused as what we're voting on and I just like clarification.
My understanding, but the.
So minus number four meant we're not approving number four.
With this motion.
Yes, with this motion, number four will be brought up by separately.
Would that be, not, so we're not voting on that tonight?
No, no, we're not voting on that on this motion, but we will vote on it tonight and settle the issue.
Okay. Thank you for, you know, that, that's all I wanted to know.
As soon as we know, and then we will go on to the supplemental.
You're getting tired too, Anne.
No, I just wanna know what we're voting on.
Well, I'm tired, I'm sorry. No, okay. So, we had a second? And we voted so far.
I'll, I'll say aye because I, I do wanna pass the other measures, so.
And all, all opposition, nay. And any abstentions? So passes unanimously, Madam Clerk. And with that, I would be happy to entertain a motion if anybody's interested for number four.
Uh, I'll move to approve item, I guess it's eight, A four. Uh, consider adoption of resolution uh, number zero six dash one seven dash two four dash D, adopting and amending a city of Sonora fee schedule set forth in Exhibit A.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, nay. Nay. Okay, and the confusion is? Do we approve, do you approve of line four abstain? So two, two, it.
Dies for lack of.
Hmm?
It dies for lack of.
Lack of a majority. Well, and there you have it. I actually am a little surprised. So.
So we will buy into the hardware that you bring up to do.
So with that, we deduct forty thousand dollars from uh, what we can spend in the supplemental. Correct? Okay.
Chris is gonna walk you through it.
So.
Okay.
And uh, we can take it, hard if I can.
Is there, are we, do we have an AI line?
Are you gonna?
Yeah, so this, this starts at the very beginning, right? So at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four, which is the end of this fiscal, we'll end with about nine point three million in fund balance. The uh, twenty-five percent city reserve, which is by policy, is three point six five nine million. We then have a replenishment of our compensated absences fund, which is a hundred and ten thousand. We have the July payment of Calpers, that's a one-time or one-time-a-year annual payment of one point two. So that leaves four point two nine one million available from twenty-four, twenty-five. And then we have next year's budget. There's, so there's fourteen point six million in revenue. There's eleven point three million in expenditures. And so that left three point two nine one million for next year's budget. Uh, we're gonna remove that forty thousand. And so we have total, uh, total um, resources available as seven point five eight three million. And then we come down to each of the supplemental requests by department. So administration had the um, general plan reserve set aside of three hundred thousand. There's the labor reserve set aside of three point nine six five million. There is the labor contribution to the um, labor reserve of fifty thousand. That now extends the labor reserve out to eight years. Um, we also have another reserve. It's called the risk mitigation reserve. This is for a potential litigation in the future. Um, we have a CIP reserve, which is, we're slowly gonna set aside money for some of the larger capital projects that we do not find grant money for. That's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And then we have a fleet replacement reserve. And we, we do have the lease, but there are some EV mandates coming and that is certainly gonna cost the city money. Then we go down to IT.
Chris, do you wanna just take it section by section to see if there's a willingness to support those? Because they've got, you have them in front of you. You've got the recommended highlighted by department.
We do.
And so with what we've recommended, you have a balanced budget with a surplus of about twenty thousand dollars. You have a supplemental request for the Vision Sonora of about fifty thousand that is outstanding. And so um, we can look at administration. If you support staff's recommendation, we can move on to IT. If you have any suggestions for changes, let us know.
So aside from reconciling the aforementioned forty thousand, I am perfectly happy with staff's recommendations that are in yellow with this. And I'm only, I'm just stating my position. So as a starting point, if we have most of us in line with that, then I would suggest that instead of going through it line by line, that we just figure out where any discrepancies in that position lie and deal with that.
And I, I think if you did that department by department, that would probably be easier.
Okay, that would be easier, okay.
So if there's no uh, discrepancies in administration, we can move to IT. Again, that's a department where we've recommended every supplemental request. Unless there's something you see there and you don't support, then Chris can move on to HR.
So.
So for IT, we are recommending some city hall and network upgrades. That would basically allow us to um, have cybersecurity and potentially work from home. And we would hope to then connect some of the other departments so they could all, you know, interact with our servers. Um, there's also a city website redesign. And then a um, city council training room or meeting room where we're, we're talking, the room downstairs, we would set it up for Zoom meetings and other trainings.
Moving along. Happy with those?
New chairs.
We uh, recommended everything from HR as well. So if there's no questions on any of those recommended items, I think the big uh, area would be facilities next, where we have some unfunded requests that have been made. Would you like to ask us any specific questions or see any other priorities within facilities that you would like advanced?
So.
Or is the council supportive of what staff's recommended?
Okay, I am, I am going off of this where you have the uh, the staff recommended ones in yellow. And on this page that we're looking at, available to the public, it's not nearly as clear.
So he's highlighted simply the um, recommended.
The recommended, okay.
This is selected only the yellow ones from that list.
Okay, and just for clarification, the public, I mean, we need to explain to the public that these are the recommended choices out of probably fifty percent more that were, for which we are going to wait.
So unless you see anything else on the.
But you said that some of this was not funded. I'm sorry, you said in facilities.
Yeah, so if you look at your list, the supplemental requests, attachment A that you have in front of you.
Yes.
For example, a hundred and twenty fire station paint exterior. That's not recommended to be funded. If you'd like it, we need to add it to the list, but then we can test.
Oh, okay, but that's not on the computer screen that I'm looking at. Okay, well, I'm.
We've only given you our recommendation. Any changes you've got, let us know. We'll plug it in.
No, so.
And if there's no.
Now, I understand, I understand that, how you're operating.
Only, only the highlighted recommended ones are on this computer.
Got it.
So those are the facility items. Um, they included um, building assessment, uh, fire station roof repair, public works roof repair, of the chairs, council chamber, and the meeting room downstairs. The three opera hall items, going to community development. The first item is that Dragoon uh, Gulch Trail expansion. So there is a Dragoon Gulch Trail fund. So the resources for that would not come from the general fund, would come from that fund. The two other items are the economic development um, program that you would have then a economic development coordinator position that we've created uh, to support that, plus the business incentive.
Um, I would like to add back in the Lineburg Street Buildout Public Art. I think that uh, the community deserves something splashy and immediate and art is the way to go.
I would second that. And uh, you know, it kind of demonstrates, you know, the moment we don't update our fees, you know, that could have covered eighty percent of the cost of doing that. But I guess that's for future councils to uh, correct. I just never thought that, you know, alleged conservatives would wanna to um, socialize essentially these fees that are incurred by individuals. It sounds a lot like.
We made the decision on that and we're not gonna rehash it all night long.
I just, I don't think it's the correct.
That we understand. Yeah, it's very flawed. So.
So do we have direction then to add that back in, I think, um?
I'm sorry, and how much was that and where to?
Fifty thousand, community development. We're short thirty now.
For art, so.
And uh, my recommendation then would be to reduce your CIP reserve to two twenty.
That seems very reasonable and because next year, there will be a lot of repaired roofs and other things that don't have to be repeated and a lot more flexibility with the budget. So.
How many, Chris, do we get it?
Yeah, two fifteen for the CIP reserve and you still are positive.
All right.
So that was.
Community development. Yeah, it's at the bottom.
Yeah.
Councilman Hawkins, any opinion on that?
No.
Okay.
And so now the police department.
I'm Cruz. For, I mean. Okay, no, it was just that, that uh, Mayor Pro Tim Sagerstrom moved to.
Oh, I apologize. Yeah, I agree.
So I, we can do it by consensus, which is fine, or we can take a vote. That's why I'm asking, just to get your opinion here. Okay. So.
All right, so thank you for that consensus. Moving into the police department, the only position, the only items not recommended for funding are the staffing positions. If there's no further direction or request for modification, we can move into uh, the fire department. All of those have been recommended for funding. Public Works, uh, the majority of theirs have been recommended for funding with the exception of the changeable message sign or the painting rig. Unless there's any questions on that or strong desires to add those. Uh, maintenance, we have requested funding for everything except for the main drain inspections. We believe we just recently did that. Those still remain valid inspections. And we went over the mono way and the annual striping program we will recommend, we bring forward to you in a future year budget, uh, unless there's any strong desires to add in any of those items. Not seeing any. Uh, then we go into the CIP. This may be where you have some recommended changes because we have a lot of parking lots identified for funding requests. Um, we have the road repaving and preservation program. Uh, we hope to get to that in a future year. Uh, but those are areas that we have not identified for funding in exchange for things like uh, beginning environmental on the main drain, the Lineburg retaining wall, coordination with the railroad on Hospital Road, um, Vision Sonora, those pet projects through grants, and then also Snell Street. Hopefully, those are your priorities, unless you see something on this list that we should add. Nothing to be added?
Oh. So with the one change to community development Lineburg, Lineburg Street Buildout Public Art, um, there are no changes. Shall we just, I'd love to entertain public comment. Should there be any? Well, no.
Hello, Katie Dunn with the Sonora Chamber of Commerce. I just wanna.
Very courageous, Ms. Dunn, at that.
It's almost ten thirty. Um, I just wanna draw your attention to Coffield Park and the stairs in the ramp and the, um, it's, it's very dangerous and very soft. And um, it's not just the stairs from the parking lot, but it's also the fence that is leaning over into the um, Sonora Creek. So just wanna bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much for yourself.
I'll just point out that the newly elected council people finally showed up to a meeting, but they're not here at the end, as Katie and I are. So let's see. I'm opposed to getting new chairs in here. I have some concerns about the sound system at the opera hall as opposed to like replacing the tables and the table dolly because they look okay if you throw a tablecloth on them. So they might last a little longer, but I'm concerned that the sound system here really sucks. I'm opposed to making the homeless outreach coordinator full-time from part-time just because how much money are the taxpayers going to spend on the homeless and all the damage they do and everything? You know, and there's other people that may be more deserving. I think we should seriously look at the fire museum because it's never opened. I think we should seriously look at the fire museum, because it's never open on the weekends when the tourists are here and want to see it. And I was told that, oh, we don't have enough volunteers. So they're open like on a Monday when nobody's here and nobody cares. My understanding is that there's a commercial kitchen in there, which seems to me, maybe we should find a way to like clean it up a little bit and then maybe rent it out for events and make some money to make it worthwhile. But then the people who volunteer told me that the kitchen belongs to them, and you can't use that as part of the building if you wanted to rent it out. So I don't know if that's true or not, but if we're not gonna use it, then we might as well lose it and just sell it. And then we could sell the property and maybe you could pay for the police station somewhere else. I'm concerned about traffic signal maintenance, because I've said a couple of times that, um, it's made for blind at Sonora Elementary School, and it never tells me when to cross. So I'll have a walk sign, but it's telling me I can't cross. The whole thing's a mess, that needs definitely. And Snell Street definitely needs to be repaired. Um, I would also like to point out that on Washington Street in downtown Sonora, there is no designated disabled parking. So if anyone is disabled and wishes to park, you've gotta go to the outskirts and then travel a long way, which I know Ted Michaud has a really hard time navigating coming to anything downtown, and he's got that fancy-ass van now, but he's still impaired.
Thank you.
Getting around.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Um. Seeing no further public comment, I'm gonna close the public comment, bring it back. And I think actually a small discussion of whether. For repairing the, um, Coffel Park entrances there and the, and the fence. Any off the cuff.
So I will, it's, I will talk to Mike, see if we can get it as a maintenance project.
Okay, because I know that at least for the last year, because it, I haven't been in there, uh, for any of the concerts for a year now. And back then, they were already soft and not exactly safe, so.
Well, I'm.
Okay.
I wouldn't worry about it.
Okay.
So with that, I guess we have to move on. To approve the budget and the supplemental requests as directed.
I.
To approve.
As, as stated by Administrator Eads, so that's the staff recommendations with the one addition of fifty thousand dollars to Lineburg Street.
Yes.
Okay.
I can add those on that.
I just try and keep things clear.
Yes.
So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose nay. Any abstentions? Passes unanimously, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, but once again, congratulations on just a really well-considered budget and, and incredible presentations, much appreciated.
Also highly lauded by the public.
So Mayor, I, uh, for item nine A, uh, would the council like to consider moving this item to unfinished business of the next agenda on seven-one? I think that this item, it was important that this council hear this item. So if I could verify with legal counsel, not before the council is sworn in, we might be able to hear this item still.
Legal counsel is still bearing with us, so we should be able to get an opinion in mere seconds. But I would love to convey it to the next meeting. Mr. There he is.
No problem, you can, you can postpone it.
Great, thank you very much. We will, and with that, um, Mayor Pro Tem Sagerstrom, you wanna give us an abbreviated council report?
Okay, um, well, I, I, pursuant to the, um, item that we moved to the next meeting, um, I have been, um, uh, this week I was on a mayor's and council members' call with Cal Cities. And I believe that the city of Sonora is about the only city that has, had, actually has its, uh, mayoral, uh, council elections in March versus, uh, in the primary versus in the national election. Everyone else says that's all they're talking about, is the, the upcoming elections and how much, um, grief they're getting from their opponents. Um, had a Christmas town meeting, um, and I, uh, the, oh, don't re, don't forget Juneteenth. Uh, there'll be a celebration out in Columbia, and we had our declaration, um, um, declared Juneteenth last year. And of course, it, uh, applies in perpetuity. And I attended the ATCA board meeting for Andy. Um, it's, it's an amazing organization. I, um, I just, they, they do so much for middle and lower-income residents. And, um, although it was interesting that they are having employee liability woes, and I had a whole presentation about insurance, um, and, uh, and also, um, board training, which was kind of interesting. So that's it, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Hawkins?
I'm just gonna say this is our last full meeting, Mark, and it's been a joy, and I look forward to the next meeting. And, um, being off for a long time, it's actually really nice, so, um, I, it, I don't know.
What are you gonna do with all those Monday nights?
I'd probably spend it with the kids.
He's gonna go out working, he'll actually try and make up.
It's, it's really good, though, you know, I, and I won't take everybody's time, but, you know, I had a, of course, after not winning in the runoff and doing all this other stuff with the supervisor election, had a lot of people ask me if I was super angry, and I, I'm not angry at all. It feels like a giant weight got lifted off my back, and it's sitting on marks right now, so, um. You know, on a serious note, I'm here for the city, and I was talking to the chief earlier, and, you know, I'm here for the council. So if there's questions, you know, you wanna run things by me, every single one of you, including the new members, and I've communicated that with them. I've, I'm the last one to work with Ron Stern, um, last one to work with Bill Canning. So it's, it's been an interesting trip, so, but I mean that, you know, Suzanne, Andy, and, you know, if you guys need any help, need, you need to push anything, need ideas of what's happened in the past, I'm here. You know, I can give you the history, so, um, the only other person literally alive that was, that was on this council that can give you history is Garavenna, and I don't even know where he's at right now, so.
Syracuse.
Oh, okay. So anyway, I just, you know, wanted to let everybody know I'm not going anywhere, I'm gonna be around, I'm gonna be doing things. And I look forward to encouraging the city of Sonora and the city council members to succeed in their jobs, the city council members.
Thank you, Councilman Hawkins. Councilman Merrill?
Uh, I just wanted to start by thanking both staff and council for, uh, covering for me for this last week. Uh, it was only the, I think the second time in about fifteen years I was able to see my uncle, and it was his sixtieth birthday, so that meant a great deal to me to be able to spend a week with him. It's probably the most time I've been able to spend with my uncle in my entire life. And, uh, seeing as I unfortunately don't have any grandparents anymore, it was really nice to, uh, be able to remember my, uh, my mom's dad who, uh, who, who left me his house here in Sonora, um, I think about him every day. So, uh, just again, thank you to, to, uh, staff and council for, for helping me take that little vacation. It really helped fill my cup. Um, also, I stayed in, uh, uh, Cam, uh, I'm sorry, yeah, Cambridge, Minnesota. It's a town, um, of about nine thousand six hundred people, and, uh, I noticed a couple of things, because they're a city in, in Minnesota. And, um, you know, a lot of times we think of the Midwest, you know, like things are, you know, us coastal elites, you know, we think like California has it so good, their transit system there, like their highways, I've never seen such clean roads in my life. And if a town, uh, in the middle of Minnesota, about an hour north of the Twin Cities, can have bulbous for their crosswalks and signs in the middle of the road saying it is state law to yield to pedestrian traffic, I think we might be able to do something like that here, uh, to keep our community members safe. And, uh, the amount of bike lanes and everything they had, the ease it was for people to just, just walk around and enjoy their downtown area. And again, this is just a random town in Minnesota, um, I, I think it was really inspiring for, for what we could accomplish in the future. And I, I just wanted to say thank you to the, the people of Cambridge for, um, opening their doors and showing me a great time in Minnesota.
Thank you. When you bring up bulbous, you will be probably fascinated to find out how many people in Sonora really can't bear the idea, and.
They don't know a good thing when they, when they have it sitting right there for the tank, taking, in my opinion, but.
I, I will say whatever, so as not to take a position at this point, but I, I was quite stunned and how much opposition there was to what, uh, during COVID would have been a very beneficial development for the city. But anyway, that's it. Councilman, Councilwoman Cruz?
I'd like to thank the, thank the staff for the tremendous presentation and the amount of work that went into this budget. So thank you all for your time, really appreciate it, it made the decisions really easy. And then also particular council members Hawkins and Plummer, I just want to thank you for your leadership for the past two years, and it's been a pleasure to work with you.
Well, thank you very much, it's very gracious. So I attended our solid waste meeting in LAFCO. The mayor's choice for LAFCO representatives is going to be probably a heavyweight, but also very important. And I'm very eager to see who ends up representing the city there. Uh, no, nothing of note that I can really share at this point. It, the process of, well, there is news, I'm sorry. So at this point, we have had, well, we, me and LAFCO has had one application for an attorney and none yet for the, uh, executive directoress or director. So it is probably not a dead issue, but it was my last meeting representing the city. So as of July first, I will no longer be a representative there. Then solid waste. I don't remember anything of note there, no solid, the only thing that really interests me about solid waste is trying to lower fees for city residents. And since that's really not in the contract, um, I don't remember anything else that, I, they talk about, you know, future developments and laws coming down the pike, I think. In the past, I do, I don't remember anything from the meeting right now, but maybe because I've been up for a little while. And then I attended, uh, TCTC where TCTC chose to give us a considerable part of our development money for the, uh, what is it, the Gold Rush Trail. And I believe it was two grants, if I'm not mistaken, the other one was for the, um, Snell, Snell Street project for the en, some of the engineering and that type of thing. But anyway, two grants, sorry, I'm not more accurate, I don't have notes from that right now. And having just finished a rather important budget. Chris, this budget, I have said it before, but you did an incredible job, thank you very much. I wish Melissa was here too, also. Well, I guess we have one more meeting to attend, but I'm starting to get a little maudlin, so it's probably a good time to just thank the staff and let you know how much those of us who have worked with you for eight and twelve years respectively have appreciated the opportunity and what a high respect we have for the jobs that you do. Thank you very much with that. And I already, already conveyed the next part to the next meeting, correct? Number nine? Yeah, okay. With that, I'd like to adjourn. Thank you very much.
Oh, gracious.